Great call to order, regular meeting, the Board of Trustees of North Idaho College. Is there a quorum present?
There is.
There is. Would you join me in the pledge of allegiance today? I have six requests for public comment. The first one is Randy Oaks. Is Randy here? It's not appearing. Public comment is hopefully held to two minutes. Judy Foss. Judy, go right ahead.
Board of Chairman Wold, thank you for letting me speak tonight. I'm doing the best I can to watch all the presidential search processes. I understand there's been conflict. I admit I don't fully understand the nature of the conflict. It raises my concerns, but also my hopes, that the process all leading to a selection is being done equitably, with equal weight being given to all opinions, and that leading to the selection is also keeping an eye out, not just for competency, but with full consideration that this new president represents this area's demographics. To me personally, that means the chosen candidate will be a good communicator as opposed to dictator, with the admin and teaching staff, with the diverse group of students, and our community. I want to see his leadership philosophy and style foster debate. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeffrey Winkler.
Jeffrey liked the Toys R Us giraffe. Spelled the same way and everything. Thank you, Board, for allowing us to have the comment. No, it happens all the time. It's either that or Greg. It just happens. I don't know why. I'm speaking in regards to insurance. Unfortunately, Redmond Insurance and many other carriers and agents were unable to provide a quote for NIC with their insurance. Insurance carriers only allow one agent to quote one company at a time. Another agent who already had all the necessary information locked out all other agents from quoting NIC's insurance. I emailed Chris Martin on October 30th, 2021, which that was a fun time for all of us, asking to quote NIC's insurance and to provide a risk management assessment free of charge. Redmond Insurance were the insurance agent for Bonner County up north, and we've saved them over $1 million in the last three years. And we desire to do the same for NIC. In Chris's email, he replied, "NIC does not currently carry traditional commercial insurance, per se. We're a part of ICREMP. That is essentially a co-op collaborative of government entities across Idaho to provide pooled risk management services and property and casualty insurance coverages. Because we're a part of this risk pool, we have not gone out for bid for traditional commercial insurance in the past. In the event we were no longer part of ICREMP pool, we would seek services through an RFP-RFQ process due to the cost and complexity and would publish the call for proposers as well as reach out to local insurers such as yourself who have contacted the college." Why wasn't there an IFP and RFQ issued for insurance? Was the former VIP of Finance Chris Martin out of line when he wrote, "We would seek services through an RFP and RFQ services because of the cost"? You know, I agree with Chris Martin's words that ICREMP is pretty unique and the services provided for some incredible services provided outside of traditional commercial insurance. I find it unique for a carrier to advise an insured to claim such small amounts of loss, accumulating an extensive loss history, and then dropping the insured only six weeks before the renewal. There's an apparent need for NIC to have risk management strategy that doesn't lead them headfirst into an avoidable risk. And I believe Redmond Insurance is the best risk management partner because that's what we house. That's what we do in-house. I believe other agents in the community should be allowed to come in and quote their services. The quote's already locked in, but NIC can hear pitches from other agents about their services provided, and then NIC Board can sign a broker of record over for those quotes so NIC is properly covered, and they give the community a fair shake through an RFP-RFQ process. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Howard Coons. Howard? What was your Jeff?
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I appreciate that you allowed the public comments at the beginning of the meeting instead of pushing it way back. I'm not really sure why you need the Poly Group to have helped you do this presidential search. I don't know what they do. But one of the things that disturbs me is that they made it seem as though they wanted the community to be involved. And one of the things they said was that if you've got questions that you want the candidates to be asked, send them to the Board. I sent questions to this Board on June 13th, and I never heard anything about it. I don't know whether you got them. I don't know whether they were asked to the candidates or what they said. Also, on June 13th, I emailed Angela Provost, and I said, "How can I watch these public forums if I've missed it, if I wasn't able to get there?" And she referred my email to Shannon Goodrich of NIC and said she could help me with that. Well, Shannon Goodrich responded to me and said, "Because we are doing two open forums, we aren't going to post them." And there's a lot of people in this community who could have seen those things and could have commented, but they weren't able to. Now, these board meetings are posted immediately after the meeting, and that's no problem. So I don't understand why these open forum meetings weren't posted for the public to be able to see. Then, at the end of the Zoom meeting, there was a place to make comments concerning, you know, the candidates that you watched. But there's no way to do that for the people who weren't able to actually go to those things either in person or on Zoom. So my concern is that the Poly Group either was very irresponsible in handling that or it was purposeful. I don't know which, but at any rate, I'm disappointed that the community was not really allowed to be involved in this process as much as we would have liked to have been. Thank you.
Thank you, Howard. Doug Miller.
Good evening. I wanted to come in as a person that was born and raised in Coeur d'Alene, graduated from this college in 1971. Two out of my three kids have gone to this college. And I wanted to come and give my support for the athletic department to put the men's and women's basketball teams back into the NJCAA. And for a person, I had set through the 36 years that Rowley Williams was here. Started with when Rowley took over, the first thing he did was he brought KVN IIN to start broadcasting the college games live. Bob Angel was the radio announcer. Bob's oldest son was Tim Angel. Tim was my best friend. Bob used to bring us to all the basketball games with one purpose, one purpose only, that we had to sit behind Rowley on the bench so he could keep an eye on us with the announcer's booth. And we did not move for those whole games. So I've been speaking, and I've been going to basketball games at this college since 1962, all the way through, all the way through the years, and watched Rowley build the program up to a national program. And for whatever reasons, that was taken away a few years ago. We can't go backwards, but we can go forwards. I remember many, many years when the gym was full, standing room only because of the competition and the level of athletics that was performed with those two programs. I'd love to see it come back. I've still been a long supporter of many of the sports here at the college, particularly the basketball programs. The basketball games don't draw 200 people, and that's counting the students. And I just think that the community, the school, and everybody in this operation deserves another shot to let that basketball program get back up to a national level. Thank you.
Very much, Doug.
Chair.
I think we'll finish public comment first. Russell Grove.
I'll probably do let my dad do most of speaking. Us golfers are pretty quiet and don't like to speak in person very often, so.
I apologize for not announcing both of you.
So for those of you who don't know me, my name's Russell Grove, and I've been the head men's and women's golf coach here at North Idaho College for eight years, going into my eighth year, and this is my dad, Russ Grove, who's been the assistant for the last five years. And I had submitted a letter and a couple figures to the Board. I'm not sure if you guys received those or had a chance to look at those yet. But basically, what we want to do is just be looked at as equally to the other sports when it comes to especially the coaching pay and stipends. Where we've taken the program since 2014, when I first showed up, there was only six men on the men's team and four on the women's team. And now we have hundreds of golfers wanting to be on the team, which only obviously brings in more money. We keep it to around 20 players per year, but those 20 players would not be here unless it was for our golf program and the success it's become over the years. So basically, and in one of those figures, just kind of outlined the income that we bring in, we're basically from tuition minus the scholarships. And then what we bring in from the dorms, where half the team stays in the dorms, is around $164,000 per year. And our current yearly budget, which includes the coaching salaries, is only $52,000. So we're in the net at least $110,000. I know there's different costs to run the school, but that's just looking at the program just as in itself. And so again, I'm the only coach that's considered part-time, even though it's not part-time. One of the figures I included shows the exact schedule I had for April, where a lot of weeks I work over 100 hours. And we're also the only sport that has two seasons, fall and spring. And I'm the only coach that coaches two separate programs, both men's and women's golf. And my dad is the only, or we're the only sport without a paid assistant coach, and he's been a volunteer. And so we're just in hopes that we could be looked at as equally and treated like the other coaches.
I'm a really good public speaker. I wasn't planning on this, but it's an honor and a privilege to be part of NIC. I'm 75. I own social security, and I drive the Parker Courtesy van part-time for extra pay. And I haven't been paid anything. And I lose typically close to $1,000 every spring and fall that I don't work there. And at first, five years ago, Russell asked me if I could help him go down to Yakima, and I said, "Sure, of course." And then it just evolved into a regular position as an assistant golf coach. I love the kids. And I can tell you that there's not another golf coach in our conference that works harder than Russell. And that's really all I have to say. I consider, as I said, a privilege and honor to be part of this program. Thank you.
Yeah, and just the last thing I'll say, so just kind of where we were able to take the program and just having all those student-athlete, or just students, golfers, junior golfers that want to come play here. Again, that, you know, before NIC Golf wasn't on the map. And, you know, with our success, we've won the most, for those of you that aren't familiar, we've won the most NwAC titles in any other sports program here at the college. Thank you.
Thank you both.
Thank you. Chair, whenever we're done with public comment, I'd like to respond.
Corey Simons.
Chair, old Board, thank you for allowing public comment and letting us speak our opinion on things on the matter on the Board. I'm speaking also on athletics. First of all, I will have to tip my hat to Russell Grove. I've known Russell for quite a while, and he is an amazing coach and amazing mentor to our golfers. And he does an amazing job, and we are lucky to have him, and we need to do what we got to do to keep him. Couple points regarding athletics for me. Same as some of the others, I'm born and raised Coeur d'Alene, grew up in this area, grew up in this gym, chasing balls in this gym, watching all the Rowley's teams, and dreaming of playing for the Cardinals one day with my two older brothers. I was fortunate enough that Rowley Williams recruited me, and I was able to play here as a player, went to school here, moved on. This athletic department kind of changed my life, hence the reason that I coach. So there's a lot of history and tradition in this athletic program. And most of that, and I'm speaking on the men's basketball side for those, I guess, for those that don't know, I'm the head men's basketball coach, starting my 19th season here at NIC. So I've been here quite a while. I've kind of seen it all. But there's a lot of history and tradition in this athletic department. And when we moved to the, switched leagues, a lot of that kind of dwindled away, unfortunately. And like I said, I'm speaking on my program. We went from packed-out houses, standing room only, to doing everything we can to kind of get community support and to get people in the gym to support our student-athletes. One thing about that is the community, when we are National Juco, the community brings in so much more support because us and the league affiliation supports the local economy. With the national junior colleges, all the teams coming in spend multiple days here. They rent hotels, they spend money in our restaurants. It brings a lot of money to our economy in what we all know is the worst time of our economy in the winter. So it's great for the economy as well. And for me, this is my situation is I coach, obviously, because I love my players. I love to influence people. The biggest influences in my life were coaches, and I try to pass that forward. But I'm as competitive as they get. I mean, I don't like to lose, and if I'm playing my 14-year-old son in ping pong, I'm going to thrash him. I like to win. And for me, it's, you know, National Juco is the top level. I mean, for those that are from Coeur d'Alene, remember the CSI North Idaho College rivalry. And that just hasn't been here for years. And it won't come back unless we have a chance to potentially play at that level again. And with that, when we were there, the last year we were there, talk about the notoriety for our programs. The year before we went National Juco, we had three teams in our athletic department ranked number one in the country. Wrestling was ranked number one, men's basketball was ranked number one, and volleyball was ranked number one in the country. So the publicity that those programs bring nationally to our institution is unheard of. And it's just great for our institution to be on a national level. And I think that you guys should take a look and kind of see what those options are. And the last thing I'll say, as a coach, we were kind of told during the switch that this was going, and the Board was told, this was going to save hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars. Hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars. Well, I would ask the Board to do some research and find out how much it saved. I've done some. And the EADA report, which is done by our school every year, in 2012, the last year that we were National Juco, the athletic department as a whole spent $2.15 million. That was the last year that we were all National Juco. Year 2019, before COVID hit, when we were all NwAC, we spent $2.19 million. We've spent more money in the league we're in than we have. So I would ask the Board, because you were told we were going to spend, save hundreds of thousands of dollars, I would ask the Board to look into that and kind of see kind of why, because that was the number one reason we were moving, was to save funds. And looking at the report, we haven't really saved any funds. So I would ask you to look at those funds and look at, you know, potentially, you know, letting, see, because I know the NwAC talked about some sports coming, some sports not, and let the coaches decide kind of what we want to do. Because I would love to be back in the National Juco and be competitive with the likes of CSI in Salt Lake. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Corey. Celebrating success.
Chair Wold, I've been waiting. Usually, people are allowed an opportunity to respond with people who provide comment. We don't have to. We can sit here and smile at them if we want, but if we want to engage with the public, we... They came here to talk to us.
Athletics are on the agenda tonight, and you can speak to the issue on the item when it comes up on the agenda.
I want to respond to the people.
Well, Greg, if you feel you need to do that, go right ahead.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
I would just like to say, we just heard from Judy Foss that this community doesn't want a dictator, in her words. And I'd say people are tired of unilateral decisions. So like, please stop making unilateral decisions, like who gets excluded for dinner. If you recall, that just happened this past.
Greg, would you please be remain to what you're talking about, please?
Yeah, I'm responding to the people. From that gentleman's experience, who talked about insurance, he described how Chris made the unilateral decision without even accepting a quote and considering an option. Are we seeing a trend here? Mr. Howard Coon just described a purposeful decision to isolate the community, but not even providing the recorded public sessions to the public to weigh in. So Angela's reasoning to the Board, she actually emailed the Board to explain that. And the reasoning was is because things on the internet stay forever. But then this Board, thanks to Justy Geddes' vote, just did interviews that will stay on the internet forever. But we can't even provide the public forums on the internet for the community to weigh in? So I just heard an example, one last thing, to the person who spoke, to Russell Grove and his dad, I'm addressing him. I just heard a great example of the dedication of the people who work at NIC. And I'd say this, so people work at NIC because they love the mission, people and location, among other reasons. But consider why people work at NIC when you consider the president's salary with the upper range of $240,000. That's a salary that makes more in one month than what some of these employees make in a year. So we just hear these people trying to help the Board make good decisions. So let's actually hear them. So I just want to say that I actually hear the people who spoke that. So thank you.
We'll move on with the agenda. Celebrating success, the graphic design program.
Technical. Good evening, Chair Wold, Board of Trustee members, Mr. Lyons, guests, colleagues, friends of NIC. It is my extreme pleasure to introduce our graphics design instructor, Philippe Valet. He's been with us 20 years, and he is here tonight to talk about the success of his program. And then at the end, I'd like to come back and recognize him for an amazing accomplishment this year.
Thank you, Dr. Silva. Appreciate the introduction. Chair Wold, trustees, member of the cabinet, President Chevindly, as well as distinguished guests. Distinguished guests, much appreciated. Well, we're here to celebrate success, and so this is actually an opportunity for me to go back and take a look at what we've done, not just in 20 years, because we don't have the time, but we want to focus on what's been happening last year and this year. So for many, many years, we have a strong enrollment in the graphic and web design program. That's a fact. All the faculty teaming with me, Brad Schwartz and our part-time faculty, Lydia Herring, Lloyd Bedwell, as well as Jerry Moore, all work in the industry. So therefore, we provide practical and relevant learning and prepare our students, which will be the last topic here. We prepare them for jobs, and indeed, they have jobs. Some of them have jobs before graduation. And the employers, which we partner with, are very kind to us to let those people finish their degree so they're fully formed and very viable as an employee. The curriculum is guided by a strong advisory board, made of employers in the entire region. Also, they're very much committed. They provide scholarships to our students and well-paid salary, which is actually a good. Next slide here. Oh, oh, wow, that's better. Okay, thank you, Bob. So a couple accomplishments in the community since earlier, a lot of testimony from the community. We put students to work. We give them jobs, and we contribute. The city of the Coeur d'Alene logo was designed by Dorsey Gross, currently working for the last six years in an advertising agency. The Kittec logo, sometime people don't know, but yeah, Grant Hokey designed this. He's currently working for a company in California dedicated to children. And obviously, the Cuny seal that has been designed by Jimmy Marble, which is actually now an employee from North Idaho College. So every year, we have something, it's called the Adio Award, which is the Oscars of Design. It's nationwide. It says also, actually internationally. A few years ago, I was in Spain. I see the same thing. So let me walk you through, I have two students of mine here, the president of the audience, who I have an opportunity to talk to them later on. So we have an event that is created by the American Advertising Federation, where students in the region, as well as professionals, need to compete in 54 hours to create, actually, a package for a nonprofit organization. So this one was for Spokes Fest, and you can tell that three of our students, Crystal Hart, Annalise Fuller, and Noah Turner, won that competition. Again, competing with people in the entire region. Then I have a student here, which is actually a great example. This is a dual-credit student that just graduated from my school. Has been for the last year in our program. And as a first-year student, as a high school student in our program, won his first Adio Award for the same type of event. And this one, he had to create something in 54 hours, a website, email blast, posters for that event. He will talk to you a little bit, little one about specifically. He can speak better about this because he spent 54 hours with his colleague to create this. But he didn't stop. So out of a class assignment, he created an entire business package, as is commonly seen in the industry. So here I can talk about this a little better than I do. And then every year, we have something that is happening. It's called Viscom PASC, which is a competition from Alaska down to Utah. All the colleges and universities compete for this. For some reason, the water at NIC is pretty good because in the last few years, we kept winning first place, second place, third place, and they earned scholarship given by the industry. So we're very pleased about that. And again, a familiar name, Crystal Hart. She had a very good year. And then we have another student, Maya Crescendo, who's here. You will address her in a few minutes. Who created an assignment from a class. She had to create an entire package from scratch, an entire branding. So this is what we teach, and this is why we're very successful, having our student working. These two students, as I mentioned, are currently employed. And Maya just graduated, just a few weeks ago. We have a newspaper in Spokane. It's called The Lender. It's a free newspaper. Every year, they publish a summer camp flyer. Every year, they publish a summer camp flyer, booklet, and we've been commissioned by the professional of The Unlender to design the cover. This one is from Lydia Herring, she earned an Addy Award, she is one of our part-time faculty, fully employed, works for the Agathon Corporation, Agathon Media and Creative, full-time, and taking the time to come to us and give back to the college, because she had a very good experience here. So moving on, Crystal Hart did the same thing, so every year, they come to us, when somebody's happy, they come back again. And she was created again with an Addy Award. The people that judge the Addy Award are not from this region, they're from the East Coast, they're from the Midwest, they do not know any of the people that enter an Addy in the region. So it's very, very fair. And then some community engagement that we've done in the past, actually eight and nine years ago, we worked with TESH, some of you know that, the organization, we painted their building, that was part of services that NIC was doing. And this year, we've been approached to create an entire rebranding for them. We won an Addy Award, that was actually a very, very, very good thing. We created the logo, we created a video for them, it was a wonderful experience for our student. The student that won this award, Duke Richelson, is also graduating this semester, is currently working full-time as well. Annalise Fuller is also working full-time as they graduated. Again, we focus on job. Let me say it again, we focus on job. So I'm going to introduce those two great students, the president, I have other students here that joined me, previous graduate, which is kind of nice to, to see that they still support the program. In fact, they hire our student, which is, which is phenomenal, so, so they still had the great experience here. So why don't I bring Maya and Max here, and actually, they can tell you about what happened in the Robidoux Scholarship. American Advertising Federation, for the last 17 years, created this scholarship, noted, and I advise you, I'm not very good at math, but I can do the math, 17 years, 21 times, we won this award. North Idaho College, we focus on job, we focus on award, we change life for people. I'm going to let you have them talk about this.
Hi, everyone. My name is Maya, I recently graduated from this program in May. Over the course of two years, my professors not only taught us how to design, but they also really prepared us for this competitive industry. I was given the honor of receiving the Tony Marie Robidoux Scholarship as a first-year student, and this April, I also, as you can see, won a Silver Addy Award at the American Advertising Federation for my tossed pizzeria packaging design. I'm so thankful I was able to be a part of this program, and I will always value the life lessons I took from it. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Max Bazler. I am a current student at NIC. Like Philippe was saying, I am a dual enrollment student, so that means I just graduated high school a few, a few weeks ago. And so then I have another year after this in the fall that I'll continue, and then I'll graduate in the spring of 2023. Like Philippe was saying, this program really sets you up for jobs, and you have a lot of opportunities to win awards along the way. One of them was the TMR Scholarship for 2022 this year, and then the other two were the Addy Awards, two bronzes, and then I had the opportunity to work with Kenneth Shields on the 2021 Create Event, and we, as a team, we won that, it was a collage for a fundraiser. But this, this program has been really awesome for me, I've had the opportunity to really hone my skills on design programs, how to use machines in the industry, and as well as, you know, just talking to clients and being able to communicate them with them effect, effectively. But I'd just like to thank my instructors for guiding me along the way. Thank you.
Isn't that wonderful? We have a dual-credit student and a graduate, and you can clap, because these guys are amazing. We're so proud. We're also proud of one more thing. Philippe got Educator of the Year. You can see why his passion for what he does and these students is, is off the chart. One thing I don't know if it's emphasized with the Addy, these are professionals, professional advertisers, as well as colleges competing for these awards. We compete against four-year universities, and North Idaho College, under his leadership, is sweeping these awards. So we're very proud. Thank you for the opportunity this evening.
Thank you. Thank you, and congratulations, Philippe. One of our presidential candidates stated that we should have success at the beginning of the meeting, and thank you for bringing success at the beginning of our meeting. We'll move on to the president's report. Dr. Savali.
Thank you. Chair Wold, trustees, public. Last week, I was in Pocatello for the State Board of Education meetings, and it was great to get away and be there and hear from others, their admiration and appreciation of the fine work NIC's faculty and staff have done during this period of transition. The great work we're doing is recognized and noticed across the state. I'm very excited for the future of higher education here in the state of Idaho, and the increased collaboration between the eight institutions of higher learning. During the next legislative cycle, many of the requests you see from the higher education sector will show that this collaboration and efforts to continue to meet the workforce needs of this state, particularly in the areas of healthcare and health professions and cybersecurity. A third area that all eight institutions are going to focus on is student completion and retention. I know that June has been a very busy month for our Board of Trustees with the presidential interviews, but I look forward to completing Board Orientation in July, so our new trustees can better understand the complexities of this institution, as well as the opportunities and challenges that lie ahead. I am hopeful that in July, without a regularly scheduled board meeting, we can find time for a board workshop on facilities, where we can talk about the Headland Project, and as we move forward, $7 million in deferred maintenance that we have to use, and strategically, what new building projects we want to move forward as we continue to grow and meet the needs of this region. I recommend July 27th at this time to give us an opportunity to discuss all these items, as that would be when we would meet if we had a regularly scheduled board meeting in July. So I, I hope that will work with you guys, but I would love to have that facilities meeting and continue to move forward. Lastly, as this is potentially the final time I give this report, I want to express gratitude to my team and to all who have stepped up in this transition period to help me in my leadership. Dr. Silvas, thank you. Thank you for coming out of retirement. You had the hardest job on campus, having all of faculty and student services apply, reporting to you, and you rebuilt that leadership team of deans, and you created cohesion across there, and you eliminated roadblocks that had been there. And thank you for your work in helping us move forward. You've set the six, the standard and set a groundwork and a foundation for future successes that are going to happen. Thank you. Sarah and Karen, thank you for all your hard work and dedication to our faculty and staff. There's not a meeting that goes by where they don't mention, how can we recognize and honor our employees? And through their hard work, we found ways to increase compensation this year, as well as recognize the efforts of our faculty and staff in unique and meaningful ways. And I'm appreciative of that, and I know this community is. Ken and Steve, this community will never truly understand your efforts on addressing the accreditation concerns. You were both instrumental in the planning and implementation, the response to the peer panel review, and to the Executive Committee of the NWCCU. Ray, all thank you for your work on development, we still landed numerous grants, kept moving forward, sold out the raffle house, and, and continue to move forward to support our students. And lastly, Shannon and Laura, thank you for always being one step ahead and tying all the loose ends together and for watching my back. In both of your roles, you have experienced so many landmines this year, and you both navigated them with the utmost professionalism and dedication to this institution. I'm honored to serve in this role, and I'm appreciative of the fine work that this institution continues to do. Thank you.
Thank you. As a representative to the North Idaho Foundation, I will give the monthly foundation report. This last month, the board invited Aaron Lanigan, the executive director of Gizmo Carlin, to provide an overview of the services and programs offered by Gizmo, located on the NIC campus in the Headland Building. You already took some of my power here in terms of construction of the Really Big Raffle House is on schedule for completion. The Really Big Raffle drawing will be held on July 13th. The annual fundraising campaign to provide support for North Idaho College programs and student scholarships is going well, and it will conclude at the end of the fiscal year on June 30th. The foundation board has approved the slate of officers for the following two years. For consent agenda, we have meeting minutes for May 25th, June 9th, June 10th, June 13th, and June 16th. Is there any comment, or can we accept that as a consent?
Oh, we're on the consent agenda.
We can just consent. We'll move on to unfinished business. Tab one, action, resolution to reserve forgone taxes. Sarah, would you take that?
Dr. Wold, can I comment first? Can I comment first?
Oh, yes.
Sarah, you can, I'm just going to jump in ahead of you, but you can go ahead. But I just wanted to touch base on this forgone and, and recognize this as a chance to thank Sarah for the work her and her team do, and the great work that they do. NIC is entitled to take 3% every year, and has only taken part of that 3% three times in the last nine years. Every other community college in the state starts by taking that 3%. Sarah and her team have continued to be good stewards of the resources provided to them by this community and by the state, in finding ways to make it work within our means. NIC has and remains good fiscal stewards. This year, we did a great job again operating within our budget. For forgone taxes to ever be taken, it would require the authorization of this board to access what amounts to an emergency savings account. If the board authorizes this, this is only preserving institutional flexibility, but we remain in great financial shape.
Thank you, Dr. Savali. So I am here to discuss forgone taxes one more time, this is our last chance, and we need to have a decision tonight so that we can move forward with submitting our budget to the county by the deadline in September. I guess we could do it in August, but I'd like to do it tonight. So before you is just the decision whether or not to reserve the 3% worth of taxes that we did not levy as part of our budget process this year, that equates to about $519,000. The resolution that you would put forth would simply allow us to add that balance to the existing forgone balance, which is currently $3.4 million for North Idaho College. If you choose not to approve the resolution, then we lose the opportunity, the opportunity is lost on a permanent basis.
Chair, do you have a question?
Thank you. Greg?
At the last meeting, there was, someone to my left had reservations about using forgone taxes to pay salaries. If we were to not increase forgone taxes, or does this board, even without, if we had zero forgone taxes, don't we have the ability to essentially raise taxes already and pay salaries? I guess that's a question for you or Mr. Lyons.
We're statutorily restricted to a 3% increase annually on our base for property taxes. The, the exception to that is we're also allowed to take new property on the rolls.
Maybe it's, maybe it's not salaries, I'm thinking, if we were to say, be sued, that, and do, do we have any ability to raise money? I remember at the last meeting, I should have.
There is a tort claim, and I would defer a little bit to, as well to, to assist with this, but there is a tort claim statute that allows us to, to levy taxes and to resolve tort issues. That's always going to be a year in arrears.
Yeah, so we do.
Mr. Chairman, trustee McKenzie, right now, the, the, the college does, as part of the, the taxes that it receives, that are assessed, some component of that is, is authorized under statute that allows taxes to be assessed for risk management program. That part of the assessment historically has gone to, in fact, it needs to go to the premiums for the insurance. So whether we can, and to the extent that, that the college might be able to assess taxes for tort risk is, is unclear at this moment, as to whether there was a judgment, because it's complicated by the fact that there's always the potential for a judgment that is outside of the Tort Claims Act. So whether, whether taxing assessments for judgments that are outside or authorized by law is a little unclear at the moment, there are no cases on it, and we've been having some conversations with the AG's office, or at least getting some information from them, but it, right, right now, we're looking into that issue.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Chair.
Mr. Chairman, I, I think I was one of the ones that expressed reservation about not taking the forgone or holding the forgone. Since that time, I've met with Sarah, and I have a better understanding of the financial situation of the college, and I believe at the last meeting, I said if trustee McKenzie would make a motion to not take the forgone, I would second it, and I still offer that.
So moved?
So moved.
Second. So moved and seconded not to take forgone taxes. Is there any discussion? Todd.
Trustee Getty, I appreciate you having visited with, with Sarah to get a, a handle on where we're at financially, because I know over the last while, that had been an issue that had been bandied about, and even had been under the microscope a little bit of the NWCCU, and that I think, quite frankly, at times probably offended Sarah and her team with some things that were said to the impact of our bonding ability and the whole 1/10 of a percent that we might have been added to our, our bond pricing, which was an emphatic amount. The fact that we've been so strong and maintained that strength and been consistent, and then, because they've done such an outstanding job. So I'm glad we're able to revisit this and look at this in the current light and see where we're at. And along that line, Sarah, if you'll forgive me, I, I do want to, I normally try to let you know if I'm going to ask questions, but I'm going to ask a couple, but I think these are ones you can handle.
Okay.
Very easily. Because I would like the public to know where we're at, because this is public money. Kind of goes back to the whole thing of, of why aren't we doing RFPs for whoever's providing our insurance services? It's not even necessarily the carriers, who's providing the services, you know, what agency's going to be most responsive? Same as we had Megson McHugh Forever as our auditor, and one day, Chris Martin said, Joe, I think it's time we check somebody else, and then suddenly it was Ida Bailey. And before he left, he said, well, maybe it's time to change that again. So some of these, we've gotten on a more, a, a schedule that's, that's more set, and some of them are, are still a little bit, as, as it kind of feels right, it seems. So I know it's something we've been working towards, something I've been asking for for the eight years I'm on my, that I've been on the board, and then the last year and a half also, the third term. I want us to be able to be good stewards of public money, and I want the public to see where we're spending the money, and I want those in the public sector that can provide the services to the college to have equal opportunity to provide those services and to receive those funds for their services. So Sarah, it's kind of a two-part, so let's start with just the first part, so people can understand where we're at fiscally. We are about to end the quarter, at the same time, we're going to be ending the fiscal year here on the end of June. I suspect you have a handle on what those numbers look like, pretty close to it. Can you, can you tell us where we're, where we're ending in expenses versus revenue, revenues at the end of this fiscal year?
Yes, the, well, sorry, trustee Van Dujie, Chair Wold. Yes, I, we. Yes, I, we recently closed the month of May for the college, and I produce financial statements at the end of every month. And at the end of the month of May, we were $1 million excess revenue over expenses through, year-to-date through May.
That sounds really good. Can you give me at least ballpark? I think we have, and I'm not gonna talk about the foundation, because they are a separate entity, and I don't wanna speak out of turn, but I think last I'd heard they were somewhere north of $20 million with the goal of about 5% a year, and I think they were somewhere in excess of $1 million a year in the scholarships they're providing. So that's a wonderful pot of money they've got there and the way they're able to change lives with that, with the scholarships, what they do for the students. For us, we probably have our capital fund, capital fund that we've been adding about $2.5 million a year, too. So a current balance on that, and when we're gonna add that next $2.5 million. And that's the foregone taxes from the old mill site, so from a long-ago argument and discussion. We also kinda have our, what I'll call our loose cash, our petty cash, our checkbook, if you will. And then we have some reserves that we have established, and those are set aside. Can you give me some approximate balances of those accounts?
Can. So currently, I also get a monthly cash report from my staff that tells me the actual cash balance of all the accounts that we currently have with all the various banking institutions. As of this Monday morning, we had in between the state investment pool and our checking accounts, we had about $16 million in cash to support day-to-day operations. We had an additional $11.7 million in your board-designated capital investment reserve. So total is $27 million.
All right.
We'll have, just to make a comment. We still have a full month worth of, we have payroll still, we have two payroll cycles still to pay out of that, and all of the bills that we'll have coming in in the month of June. Our low watermark, what we call our low watermark over the last four or five years, has been just around $8 million. So that's basically the lowest our cash balance has gone. What happens is we get a large influx of cash in July from both the county and the state.
From the state, is that for both academic transfers, CTE?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Again, I just thought that was important, and everybody could get a snapshot of where we're at. And again, I think that speaks well to the fact that we've still got the 3.4 in the current balance for the foregone. So again, I'm pleased that we're readdressing this topic and looking at it again in a new light with updated information. So, thank you.
Chair Wold?
Yes.
I'd like to say something.
Greg?
I'd like to remind the public who I work for that even if I'm not gonna run again in November, that I still work for you in that even though it's not an election year, because Todd and I are not up for election, the both of us expressed at the last meeting, and I think you'll still find out soon, that we are still against foregone taxes. And I just wanna say that I stick to my values even when not in an election year, coming up for an election in November. So.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? The motion is to forego foregone taxes. Everybody clear? All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay? Pass is 5-0.
Thank you.
Next item, board conduct policy. Dr. Savali?
Thank you. And you do have a tab with the corrections that we have made in this. But after last month's meeting, I formed a small committee to work on this policy to further meet the recommendations found in the April 1 action letter to NIC. Dr. Kurtz and Sarah's work led to the word confidential from one part of the policy being eliminated, and added a single paragraph that adds clarity to the intentions of this policy. Trustees can still have communications. They just aren't confidential, and they should respect the processes of the institution. This protects informal conversations, and it allows the administration to continue to explore the development of an ombudsman program that would allow employees and students to make confidential communications regarding operational issues. And my team is still working on developing an ombudsman program at this time.
Do I have a motion to accept this policy?
You have a motion to table this policy until an ombudsman policy is generated?
I have a motion to table. Is there a second to the motion to table?
I would second that. I'd like to have some discussion.
I don't think there's any discussion for a table any motion, is there?
Well, you might be right, sir. I was wondering if we're just having approximate timeline of where we might see that, but I'm happy just to table. Sorry.
The motion on the floor is to table. All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay?
Nay.
Nay.
Nay. The motion is not tabled. So the motion, we, I'm still looking for a motion regarding this policy then.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we adopt the new language and forward that to the Northwest Council, NWCCU, as part of their recommendations.
Thank you. Is there a second?
My second.
So moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Greg?
I think it's I think this college is needs an ombudsman program immediately. And I would like it. I'd even hold a special session meeting for an ombudsman program. So the fact that you're taking out confidential, while I have absolute trust in our current interim president, I think is premature in looking at the whole picture of things. And yeah, I noticed that University of Idaho has an ombudsman program. I don't know why we can't copy and paste and implement it here. So I think this college community is tired of unilateral decisions from the former presidents and the culture. And I appreciate the changes implemented by interim Savali for culture, but I still think more work needs to be done, and I'm against this policy changed as is.
Any further discussion? Todd?
Thank you. I have a couple, couple quick thoughts, but a question first. I wasn't aware of the U of I ombudsman program, so that's even more interesting. So maybe something we could maybe model off after we've got a chance to look at, see if it's something that we like. So to that point, I guess, Dr. Savali, I know you've got some folks looking at this. Do we, and I apologize, I'm putting you on the spot a little bit here. Do we have a timeline, or a goal, or a target of when we might try to have some idea of what this might look like, or something like that?
Dr. Savali?
Chair Wold, trustee Vanducci. We have looked at it. We have talked about it in PC. One of the issues in doing it immediately is this is a mediation policy that is also in NIC's policy that we're going to need to adjust. And if we are going to adjust that policy, we will need to go through our faculty and staff and the Senate to get their feedback on this as well, because this is not a policy that just will apply to the board. It will involve our constituent groups. And so with participatory governance for an ombudsman program, we are going to need our faculty back on campus and the Senate to meet. And I don't believe the Senate meets again until August or September. September. That is the difficulty, since we met last time, the Senate has not met. So it is something we're working towards.
Followed, I made sure. Okay, respectful of that timeline, then. And again, knowing we've got some time with the letter boarding and the three items in there that we're looking at, and they've graciously given us till early 2013 to resolve these things, we might have a little bit of time to work with this. It seems to me that since it directly would impact in several aspects, this board policy, board conduct policy, that to do them in parallel might make sense, rather than make a change, come up with this other program, and then have to go back and evaluate the policy that we've just adjusted to make sure it's consistent and it's where it needs to be to work in hand-in-hand with the other in parallel. I would love to see those looked at together to make sure that they're consistent with one another. It seems to me that would make sense, rather than changing and potentially changing again, maybe trying to run it through the process just once. If the timeline is, we're only looking at August or September. I don't think that's too long to go. We'd have that maybe resolved by September, October, potentially. Just a thought. Just seems to me that might make some sense. Because again, ombudsman is something that I've been talking about pretty much my entire time on the board, and again, some, you know, some of my military experience and where I'm at with the IG and such. So I think it's very important that we codify and get an outside third party, and one of the most biggest challenges is whether we're talking in chain of command between faculty and staff and trustee, or whether we're talking faculty and staff and supervisor, and especially if there's been a problem. You know, we're trying to figure out a way so that if the problem happens to be with the supervisor in that direct chain of command, that that's not their route to resolution or to try to address it. Sometimes that's just pouring salt on the wound. So I just, I see these two as being linked. And I'd like us to consider that maybe we try to work them again in parallel. That would be my thought. And I would make a motion to amend the motion that we work board conduct policy in tandem with the new ombudsman policy or program. I think that makes sense. So I make that motion as an amendment to the existing motion.
Is there a second to the amendment?
Second.
So moved and seconded?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, would trustee Vanducci yield to a question?
Certainly.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Trustee, I am a supporter of the ombudsman as well. Is there anything in the language that's being proposed that would have a problem, would be a problem when we adopted an ombudsman policy?
Chairman Wold.
All right.
Trustee Getty, I don't know. I don't know what it's gonna look like for the ombudsman program or policy, so I don't have the ability to anticipate that. So I'm not quite sure. That's why my thought is to look at them in tandem or in parallel to be able to craft them in a way that there is no inconsistencies or conflicts. Looking at what we have now, I may be not the guy that's smart enough to figure out if that's gonna be an issue or not. I don't know for sure. Chair Wold.
We're, actually, we're on an amendment right now, and we could have a vote on the amendment.
I was hoping to answer that question.
I guess I've allowed a couple people to speak. Go ahead, Greg.
I could say, I would think potentially, because I could see in the, a lot of the problem right now is board members getting confidential information, and then that's basically one side of the story, very similar to that January report where the fact finders came on board. That was one side of the story, and then the institution is allowed to respond. So it's hard when trustees are having confidential information to, you know, it's one side of the story. So I'd say the ombudsman program could definitely potentially provide trustees confidential communication of what's going on on campus, or not to trustees. As you said, it's hard to determine that. But with just saying to the NWCCU, you know, "Hey, we fixed it. This is moving forward," and we're not coming back to it, it seems not genuine, not a genuine change.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, John.
With the permission of the seconder of my motion, I would like to withdraw the motion, and maybe trustee McKenzie would make the motion again to table until the August meeting.
Agreed.
All right, ahead of your amendment, then.
I would make the, so.
Do I need to withdraw my amendment?
Can I, can I ask a clarifying question for the administration? If we are able to get the Senate and approve a successful ombudsman policy by August, is this policy as it's written acceptable to the board? If we pass an ombudsman policy with it?
May I answer from my perspective, sir?
Yes.
Again, just would have to see it to make sure. I'm not trying to hedge. I'm not trying to not answer you. In my mind right now, I can't say that there's a conflict or there's a problem, but I don't know that. That's all. So I guess I'm keeping open the fact that we get a chance to review, look at where we're at with the ombudsman, then we take a clean look at that and look at it and go, "Oh, that's okay." You know, or maybe there's just some little nuance or something that we need to, you know, tweak just a little bit. I can't anticipate that. I'm not, again, I'm not, I don't know. So I'm not trying to be, I'm not trying to be difficult with that at all. And if trustee Getty is okay with that, if I understand what we're doing, I would be happy to withdraw my motion to amend.
I think we're all backed out. I'll make the motion to table this until the October meeting, so that that gives time for people to come back. Nobody has to come back during the summer. And the Senate, they have two readings in the monthly meetings, I think it is. So if it comes back sooner and it's ready, better. I mean, we're up to October meeting, you know, so.
Greg, the motion and the amendments have been removed, so you can make a motion now.
I make the motion that this policy comes back with a proposed ombuds program by no later than the October meeting.
Second. So moved and seconded? Is there any discussion now? Not appearing. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay? Motion carries 5-0. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is an action item, selection of president. Your original agenda listed a 5:00 executive session, which was not carried out today through the lack of having four votes by board members to have an executive session. We will therefore explore this action item right now. So Mark, would you lead us off?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. This addresses the selection of the college president. For some background and history, the North Idaho college president is hired by the Board of Trustees, and consistent with past practice, the president is hired pursuant to an employment contract, which is executed by the new president and with the approval and authorization of the Board of Trustees, also executed by the board chair. That's part of the history of this. Now, following a detailed search and interview process, the Board of Trustees can select a finalist candidate and offer the position of North Idaho college president. Following such determination by the board, the board chairman, typically with the assistance of college attorney, can negotiate an employment contract with the candidate selected, and any such contract will, of course, be subject to final approval by the board. Now, the board, you know, may consider a motion to select one of the presidential candidates to be the next college president and to authorize a board chair working with the college attorney to negotiate a contract of employment. And of course, that contract would be, need to be approved by the Board of Trustees. But before the board gets to the motion, I want to turn this selection item over to the selection consultant, Angela Provard. Angela, are you available on Zoom?
I am. I'm here. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can. The floor is yours.
Okay, excellent. Thanks, Mark. So thank you all very much for including me in this meeting. I appreciate it so much. And what I'd like for us to do today, or this evening, I guess, is just follow the following process that I'm gonna outline for you. And it was also in the directions that I had submitted to you prior to interviews starting at all. So I'm gonna call on each of you. You've had a chance to review reference reports, backgrounds. You've had a chance to review reference reports, background checks, feedback that has come in from internal, external constituency groups. And so I'd like to call on each of you individually to find out who your top candidate would be out of the four people interviewed. After that, then we're going to see where we are with with those names. We'll have some discussion if if necessary. I'd like to remind you, and I can certainly remind you again, as we get to that stage, that I want our discussion to focus on the positives of the candidates. This is an open meeting. We do not want to harm harm any of the candidates, the successful candidate, or any of the other three in any way by tossing, talking excessively about concerns or negatives that we saw. So, and then, again, then we'll see where we are, and and hopefully we'll be in a position where we can have a motion to enter into negotiations with the next, with the next president. So that being said, again, I'm going to call on each of you individually just to see where we are. I don't want, I'd like for us to avoid discussion at this point, just the name is what we're going to go for. So we'll have discussion here in just a few minutes. So Trustee Getty, would you mind sharing with me who your top candidate would be?
Angela, it would be Dr. Swain.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Brochet.
It would be Dr. Dominic Swain.
Okay.
Chair, if I may interrupt. See, I noticed on tab three in the board meeting that this is tab three, that there's only one page in the open meeting. So, I mean, the board has been provided packets and packets of packets of information in all these interviews that's not open to the public. So I just don't understand how we can have a decision by the board where we're provided information and it's not provided to the public. Now, I understand if we were in executive session, then okay, we're good, but we're not. We're having an open meeting, and the information is not being provided to the public. Can our attorney explain that to the community?
Mr. Chairman, Trustee McKenzie, the information, the board is, it's within the sole purview of the Board of Trustees to hire the president of this institution. The information that you get for an applicant to a public position like this is confidential, it is not a public record. That's why the board members have been given information, additional information regarding the candidates. Now, the public has had the opportunity to get to get to know the candidates through the search committee and through the open interviews that were broadcast that people could see. So there was that, but certainly trustees are given additional confidential information that is not public record by law in Idaho. So that's how that happens.
So how can this information be included in our open session board meeting if we can't give it to the public then?
Well, open meetings law is different and distinct from public records law. They are not the same thing. You can have a non-public record that you review in in a, an open meeting, it doesn't make it a public record. Open meetings, and you have the opportunity to review records that are not public records. So they're very, they're very different.
Here's Dominic Swain's with the Presidential Search Committee. I mean, these are all provided in our board packets for open meetings that we did the interviews with. I mean, can, can I just provide this to anyone here? I mean, come up with a copy.
No, 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 no. The confidential bio-information that you get to assist in the decision by the trustees as to who to select as as president is confidential and not public records. So you should not do that. That is basic personnel.
So then shouldn't we be in executive session?
It doesn't need to be an executive session. You don't, you have the information that is not, it's not, the documents that you review are not public records. So you can, you can have some, some discussion.
So we're having dialogue over this material in an open meeting?
We're not discussing the material. You have reviewed that material to assist you in understanding the the candidates.
This material in our board packets that we interviewed them, some of the candidates even referred to the material in their interviews.
Well, that's fine, but it's not a public record, Trustee McKenzie, so.
Todd, did you have a, yes?
Yes, sir. Mr. Lyons. I've got a couple of thoughts. I'll try to articulate them in some sense of order here. I guess I'm a little frustrated because I think you're splitting hairs. It feels to me like we're, whether we're having discussions or deliberations or something, we're about to try to pick a president. To me, it's a very irregular process. I find the whole thing, and I'm not sure what Angela was referring to, because if we had any instructions on this, I didn't see it. This, this is not what I anticipated or expected at all and was not prepared for to go through this process. But that's been kind of the nature of this entire search process, is being co-chair of the committee, we'd be sort of on the fly and change things as we've gone, and it's been a very bizarre process, and it's been called out, and was called out by a number of the various committee members, still to this day seems to be. So I guess we're going to work towards something, whether, however we do it, or whether we do it right or wrong. And so this is kind of a strange way to do it. We're going to poll the trustees publicly. We're sort of having deliberations. We're going to say who we like. It's a very, to me, again, very irregular, very unusual. I've never heard or seen such a thing. To me, it's still equates to, or at least smacks of of a form of deliberation. And I question it all the way. Again, as I've questioned this process, I think it's just, I don't know what the right word would be, but haphazard maybe even. You know, we're about to make some very expensive decisions. As I said earlier, we're about to affect people's lives. We're going to make decisions that will affect other decisions down the, down the pike here that could also be very expensive, and it'd be very easy right now to be very myopic and look at the very short term and not think of this in the long term. So just because, again, as I said earlier, just necessarily because you can do something now doesn't mean that's the best time to do it or that you should do it. And we even talked about the timeline and what the NWCCU gave us, back to Angela's original letter that said, make the call in November. We have the new board in place, so the new president will know the board he's working with, the board will get the president they're going to work with, because you're going to have all five of those people there theoretically for at least two years until three of them are back up in '24 to reset that cycle. And, you know, I just think there's a certain arrogance or overconfidence in this process, and I just don't want people to miscalculate this because there've been people affected and then people are going to own it, and then that's who's going to be blamed for it and criticized. So I, I just, this whole process, and then the way we're going at this and Angela leading this, I've never seen that before. When we hired Rick, the five trustees got in a room, we had a box, we had the sets of personnel records, and then the five trustees deliberated, debated, negotiated, and we talked about who the candidates were. And it was, okay, who likes this, this, and it was a process of elimination. It was rather interesting because we had a couple in-house candidates, we had some out, outside candidates, and it was interesting to hear the pros and cons of those five candidates until at one point one was finally selected. And it was a very iterative process, you know, with a big desk and five trustees and all the files and packages, and we went over it. This doesn't even remotely resemble that, and I got to believe that was rather similar to the prior searches that have been done. So this, this is one of the most strange and unusual searches and how we're going about it in a public forum, an open session, and I'm, we're getting polled by Angela, well, who do you like today? That is very strange. I got to tell you, you guys have bastardized this as much as you possibly can, and at some point, somebody's got to be embarrassed about how we're doing this. This just smacks, and and the public is noticing, trust me, and and this is not best practices. So I'm just shocked that this is how we're going at this. So I'm just, I didn't, I didn't get on this train, I'm not going to eat lunch on it, so, you know, I, I'm not giving you anybody, you know, this thing, this is terrible, and I'm just shocked that this is how we're going to proceed and how we're going to do this. But we'll keep battling through it, I guess, but this is the strangest thing. I'm really surprised. You know, we had a schedule, then all of a sudden we diverted from it, and that was supposed to be the best practices from our person's professional opinion. And man, has this just been one stopgap after another, kluge, trying to make it work, twist and turn, and we've created so much unnecessarily because of how we twisted this process. And this is, I guess, the the final example of it. So here we are, very strange.
Mr. Lyons. Mr. Chairman, Trustee Banducci, I agree with you that this is a very unusual process and that historically, when we have selected a president, and I have been through four presidential selections, that the board does get information, to get information from the committee, the search is done, very similar to what was happened in in this search. And then we go before the board, and we have, try to have an executive session so that the trustee, trustees can discuss the candidates in executive session and decide on a consensus for who would be the next president. So these discussions historically and normally would take place in executive session. And and when that motion was made earlier today, both you and Trustee McKenzie refused to go into executive session. In Idaho, it takes four votes of a five-member governing board to go into executive session. So the reason this board is not in executive session is because you and Trustee McKenzie refused to support that. So consequently, we are in a position where we're having some of these discussions in open. They do need to be careful, and 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 Ms. Provar is quite accurate in that there, it is important that board members not, certainly not disparage any, any candidate, but simply, and and also not, not get into negative discussions about them. So I think the process that Ms. Provar is trying to further is, is to get the selections out so that it can be done in an appropriate, organized manner. But yes, I agree, we shouldn't be in this position, but we are. So this is where we are.
May I respond, please?
Would you let her finish her, and then we'll discuss anything you want.
Well, no, he's got something to say.
We're still, Mr. Lyons has just inserted himself into this, and he's done that a lot in your defense because you're inexperienced, just the truth, you three don't really know what you're all are doing yet, so he's had to help you along, which is fine, as he helped me at times as board chair, especially when I was new to the position. So here we are, but the result of that vote, the vote was a result of the nonsense and the shenanigans that have been being played through this process and the lack of communication and the fact of some of us being shut out of all the discussions and the negotiations. There's been two weeks. Yeah, I found out, and David metaphor, what did you get this, we have an agenda, I do. Scheduled an executive session. I see it. Right. That was the extent. So, okay. So we were not actively engaged in all these things that are going on and the, and the planning, and and that, again, is a continuation of how this whole thing has played out. And I am, I have incredible contempt for the process and for how it was conducted and who conducted it at this time. And I, I, it was so funny, Mr. Oaks was one of the folks signed up, ask him, ask a number of the folks that were on the search committee, I had one of the students call me, and it's just interesting, a lot of people were not terribly impressed, even at the end when we couldn't figure out that 17 times 5 was 85. I mean, we were struggling with even the math and how to calculate the scores, to even rank order the the people, and we had to sit there for 20, 30 minutes while the whole thing was trying to be figured out, and it was, it was just, it was a cluster, and it was rather embarrassing, and and it was just, again, symptomatic of this whole process. So, so no, for as far as I'm concerned, this entire process is null and void, and I think we were premature in doing this, I think we raced through it, I think we got exactly where we were going to be at five o'clock, and now we're exactly where we're going to be right now because of the insistence of trying to game the system and two people resigning and getting a favorable ruling from Brian Kane, who will be gone as soon as Labrador's in place, and AG whispering, and then we get this, and the state board, instead of getting one appointment to get us back to the quorum, which has been the precedent in the state of Idaho forever, there's never been any time where they did more than that other than the start of the brand new college, which is an exception. But no, we appointed all three, and here we are. It was a power grab, a naked power grab, and it put us right where we're at, and we're doing something right now that we shouldn't even be doing. So we are where we are, and you can defend it, sir, but we will disagree. We will agree to disagree.
Greg.
Chair, I'd say, I agree. I'd say this whole process is an embarrassment, just like it's an embarrassment how Angela got her 50% discount for the presidential search process. That was an embarrassment, and I'd say even corruption then. And it's a good example of unilateral decisions of of contracts going on. You want to know how we're, ICrim, we're going to get an insurance update later, and you want to know why that ICrim jumped, dropped us? It's because guidance counselors that we're getting right now of having these conversations and open discussion, where we can't even talk about the honest feedback that we're given from the community, whether it be constructive or negative, we're doing it in open session thanks to our lawyer who says, yeah, no problem, keep going. Just whisper in his ear, it seems. That's, that's what it seems, sir, to be honest. And that's from my perspective. And I'll just say this. Everywhere, whether it be ICrim, in risk insurance, unilateral decisions, it just seems like the contracting process here that you guys are so afraid to keep a hold of is just wrong. And the community sees it, and you guys own it.
Angela, would you like to continue, please?
Would you like to explain how you got a 50% discount on your presidential search too?
Angela, please go ahead.
Well, the disappointment, the other people that had quoted for that didn't have the opportunity to come back and re-quote. There was a competitive advantage given there after Dr. Burns gave her the two dean contracts, put her in the driver's seat, she got it inside track to get the presidential contract. The two dean contracts later became three dean contracts, which we had a failed search, and we hired two internal candidates. So we paid her to help us hire two people that were already working for us, and the third one, we got a failed search, which I'm fine, because Doug Anderson's doing an amazing job as interim CTE dean. But it just, the whole process from that very start was corrupted, and it wasn't fair even to the other people bidding, and then a couple of companies wouldn't even bid because they said they knew it wouldn't go straight. Very disappointing the whole way, and this, and this is where it's led, all the way through this to where we're right here, right now. That's the point.
Angela, would you please go ahead?
Sure. So we have two people saying that Dr. McSwain is their top candidate. Trustee McKenzie, who would you name as your top candidate?
You know, I'd rather you explain to me how you got the 50% discount on this contract.
Trustee McKenzie, who would you name as your top candidate?
When you answer that question, I'll answer yours.
Trustee Banducci, who would you name as your top candidate?
I will not name a candidate at this time.
Chair Wold, do you have a top candidate you would like to name?
Yes, I do. Dr. Swain.
Thank you very much.
You three got it. You guys should buy lottery tickets. The odds of you three all landing on the same person out of four, 25% times.
Chair, Chair Wold, are you, are you interested, are you interested in having conversation about the contracts and the discounts, or should I go on with the discussion about who to select as the next president?
I think we should go ahead with the.
Discount?
Item in terms of the president's search. That's the item on the agenda.
Okay.
Having trust in the process.
Totally fine with me.
Martin.
Is there any, would anyone like to have any discussion about Dr. Swain?
Yes, I would.
Since he is the only candidate we've listed, okay? And just a reminder, Chair, just a reminder, Chair Wold, we want to keep it to positives, not disparaging Dr. Swain, not that you, you would, but, or any of the other candidates, please.
Yes, I interviewed all five candidates, and there were a number of things that Dr. Swain said and did that really impressed me that he could be a great president. The first thing was his priorities for for the college. Number one, students; number two, faculty; number three, staff; number four, community. And when questioned later, he used the same four once again. The man has the right priorities for this college. The second thing that really impressed me with Dr. Swain, I served on the local school board here 10 years, and I know what it's like to deal with people on a board. You have to listen, you have to try to coalesce your feelings and come up with ideas that are coherent with everyone. He has served the same thing, and his answers in terms of how he dealt with his board members were excellent. A great listener, he listened to others, he tried to put together consensus and tried to get things done. Exactly the type of person that I would like to see as president of this university. The third thing was Dr. Swain has some military background, Todd, and I've been in the military, and I know there are certain advantages to a military background. He has some great organizational skills, and he has some different types of leadership skills, too. So those are three major. So those are three major reasons why I considered him my top candidate. Other candidates were excellent, but this one really sounded to me like he could be the one to lead this, this college in the future. Thank you, Angela.
Thank you, Chair Wold. Does anyone else have any comments about Dr. Swain or any other comments they'd like to make about candidates? Just remembering that we're keeping it positive.
Great.
I won't have my open session conversation steered. I'll say what I want in an open session. Otherwise, we should go into executive session. I think it's important to read what the presidential search committee, the potential areas of growth and research for Dr. Nick Swain.
So, Trustee McKinsey, that was provided to you in a confidential manner as part of your board information. And Mr. Lyons, if I am not correct in that, please correct me, that's totally fine, but I was thinking that was provided as confidential information to the board.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, yes, I think that's, that's accurate from my understanding. If it's confidential information, it's for the trustees to consider themselves and really speaking about it or reading it out loud would be inappropriate.
Is there any other discussion regarding any candidate?
Yeah, I got. So I want to know, we changed this process of interviews after it already started. One candidate was at a major disadvantage. He didn't have, it's not in closed session, so it was, the link was open to the world for other applicants to not see, right? I mean, everyone says that. But are there any Idaho EEO laws about finishing this process? I mean, equal opportunity is a big deal, I would think, for candidates and changing it, or changing the process? Because, I mean, as even explained in the first interview process, it was kind of an informal interview at the dinner stage and one candidate got that, that other people didn't. So maybe that hurt him more, maybe that hurt him less or benefited him.
Mr. Chairman, Trustee McKinsey, no, I'm not aware of any, any laws that would, that would dictate that every interview needs to be the same, exactly the same. In fact, in many, in many situations, in many companies, interviews are different for different candidates. So this, there's no law, to answer your question specifically, no, to my knowledge, there's no law that would change, that would make the way this happened improper.
Todd?
Mark, Mr. Lyons, I'm not going to try to offend you, but that was a very stock lawyer answer, sir. And it did answer that, yes, legally, maybe there is no law that dictates. However, best practices are common practice, our past practices in these processes of presidential searches is that we were strewed for extreme consistency. In the last one, all five trustees were at all interviews. All five trustees had the opportunity to meet with folks informally at dinner with their spouses if they accompanied them. There seems to be a real misunderstanding or misnomer out on the web and we got an email as a board, so maybe I'm going to address that real fast. No, having dinner with candidates does not violate the open meeting law. Can we say that one more time for the 12th time? The problem was is that the reservations for all nights except for the one Monday, which we're going to be at Riverstone at Anthony's, were at Dr. Wold's country club, which is private. So if you had more than two trustees there, it has to be noticed. Well, it has to be noticed as an open public meeting, but because the country club is private, the public can't be there. That would have been the violation of the public meeting law. Had we all been at Anthony's for all five meals, then they would have noticed them and everybody could have been there and there'd have been no violation of the open meeting law. Does everybody understand that now? Having more than two trustees together is not a problem, as long as you notice it, as long as the public can be there or is declared an executive session. Okay? So that's the first thing. So please quit emailing me and telling me I was trying to violate the open meeting law by suggesting that we all have dinner with the candidates so we could meet them in an informal session and get a better chance to get to know them better with their hair down, you know, if you will, and more casual and get to know their spouses. That is not a problem. I even mentioned that the fact that the order of some of the tours was different for the different candidates. Some got to see Parker before some of the open forums or interviewing questions. Some got to see after. I found it ironic that it was shared with me that when I left the Monday meeting, that later, our board chair actually asked the gentleman about the Parker Center and he informed the board chair that, oh, I haven't been there yet. So to ask him that was to his disadvantage because he couldn't answer the question because he hadn't seen the facility. So he really didn't understand it or know it. Because I'm sure that those that had seen it before they got asked questions, when they got that tour by Doug Anderson, probably got an amazing tour and got more information than they probably know what to do with and walked away from Parker having a great, much greater understanding than where they started with that facility and the amazing things we're doing in the CTE world out there. Because I know he's extremely proud of that facility and I know he's a very intelligent man and I'm sure he's done a great job on those briefings for the potential, for the candidates. So I have to piggyback on what Greg said as politely as I can, but the, again, the process itself, the inconsistencies provided an unfair advantage or disadvantages for the different candidates, depending on when their tour was, whether they had a dinner or not, who was there. I was never properly given the opportunity to have my schedule looked at, as it should have been, as we had always done in the past. And when we started that, we knew that at a minimum, I was going to miss at least two because I was on duty and you know, you were in my office, David, we talked about this and you, I told you June and July are my heavy months. I'm at the base again tomorrow. I'm under order seven days this month and I'll be, I was under six last month and this is my heavy time and I've got more to do and I've got to be scheduling more tomorrow because I have to. How can I evaluate properly the candidates when I didn't have the equal opportunity to interview them or be in their presence or talk to them? So that's why I stepped out from the second one, because if I can't do them all, why would I want to try to do half? Just makes no sense to me. So this entire process has been flawed and that's very unfortunate. Had we just waited even till July, which we had proposed, we'd have had the ability to coalesce and for all five of us to be in the same spot at the same time. So Greg makes a very good point, Trustee McKinsey, in that the inconsistencies of this, whether it was legal or not, has created an unlevel playing field and I believe some of the candidates have a right to complain, whatever that looks like, and maybe there's no legal basis for that complaint, but it was an unequal playing field and some were disadvantaged in the process. And to be honest, some of it, you can't tell if they were advantaged or disadvantaged for what they missed out on or what they did get. It's, don't know how it would have played out. Some people may be really personable and say, next to them, when Rick came to dinner with us, whether he was told to or he was that observant, he figured it out. Rick sat right next to me, looked over at the dark beer I was drinking, I think I had Blackbeet Porter in my glass, and said, that looks really good, and ordered the same beer I had. Now, I was with him for five years. We never had another beer together the entire time, but for that night, he was smart enough to order the exact same beer I had, sit next to me and talk about drinking a good dark You just never know how those are going to play out. So we were, we were not afforded that opportunity and that's unfortunate.
Check.
So I use that as just a.
Pete or John, you haven't had a chance to speak, would you like to have a moment? Greg, let the other people speak. John, you?
I will yield to Trustee McKinsey if you will call on me next.
Thank you. Go ahead, Greg.
Well, the constituency feedback survey, some people brought up some good points. He is not an experienced senior leader in higher education.
Again, Trustee, Trustee McKinsey, that, that report was provided to you as the trustees in a confidential manner.
In an open meeting.
Feedback survey.
Isn't included in our packet.
Mr. Chairman, Trustee McKinsey, that was actually, and it was marked as confidential. We've discussed this. Open meeting law is distinct and different from public records law. The fact that you got confidential personnel information to assist in making an evaluation and decision.
Well, here's something that he said.
Has nothing to do with open meeting law.
Here's his own words. He was even saying in the interview process that the board should start, I believe it was even Nick Swain, because I took good notes on it and I'm pretty sure, forgive me if it wasn't him, but I'm pretty 90% sure it was him, that he was saying how we should, I think you even quoted it, sir, how one of the candidates, we should start our board meetings with celebrating of success. He's so, like, that's an example to where each of these candidates, not just individual ones, but we're bringing in people who don't know, and I see, who don't know that we, every board, every regular session board meeting, we're already doing that. And you guys are making a mistake and you know it.
John?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to express my reasons for choosing my first candidate and I had a second one that was very close. I appreciate the fact that Dr. Swain has roots in North Idaho. I think if he gets here, he will stay here longer than someone that might be looking for another job in the next two or three years. The second reason that I think that he is the best candidate is his military background. This board may very well be dysfunctional in November after the election and I think he has the ability to handle that. And Mr. Chairman, are you ready for a motion?
Yes.
I make the motion that we move to accept Brands and enter negotiation with Dr. Brands.
Say that once again, please.
I make the motion that we enter negotiations to select Dr. Brands as our president.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it for discussion purposes.
It's moved and seconded. Discussion?
As trustee Bouchette and yourself and I all discussed after the meeting, the story that Bouchette, or Dr. Brands shared over dinner really showed his dedication that he'd be willing to go the extra mile or sing the extra song to, for his institution that he works for. And I think you all know what I'm talking about. I don't know what I can say in this open session because I get stopped so often. I don't know what's sensitive or not, even though it's in board packet material for an open session meeting.
May I ask a question, sir?
Yes, go ahead.
It's going to be directed to Mr. Lyons. Mark, Mr. Lyons, we held the interviews in open session, which I think was a bit of an aberration to the normal process. And they were, I'm sure people were recording those as they went out because they were live. And we kind of worked under the honor system that hopefully nobody affiliated with any of the other candidates or themselves were viewing them or counseling them or doing mock interviews or anything else. So assuming that nobody violated that and there were no unfair advantages there, it still was supposed to be open to the public, either in person or electronically at that time by Zoom. But yet, I'm asking this question because now we're talking about what we can disclose and what we can't disclose. My understanding is that we got emails as a board and Angela's responding, why are we not posting those interviews now after the fact since they've occurred and nobody gains an advantage by seeing them? Why are we not posting those? Is there somehow that those are protected also or confidential even though they were in open session and not in executive session and they were televised live and in person? This makes me think that there is some question here as to what, what is supposed to be out there and what isn't. And again, this process has been a bit of a kludge and it's, it's kind of been hard to keep track of the, of what is and isn't releasable and shareable. And I don't want the answer that, it lives on the internet forever. That was one of the answers we got, Angela's answer. Because yeah, it does live forever, but once it's an open session, everybody has to acknowledge and understand that. That's just the rules. Once it's out there, it's out there on social media. Many people learned that lesson when they post things ill-advisedly. Shouldn't all this, where do we draw the line on what should be released? Because I, you know, should the interviews all be posted? And what information from them? And if the interviews are posted, then anonymous feedback, why would that not be shared? I'm trying to understand where we're making the distinction.
Todd, I'm going to stop you for a moment.
No, I'm done.
I'd like you to be germane to the motion, which is to, to offer the presidency to Dr. Brands.
The reason I ask, sir, is because we're, we're talking about the candidates. We've been asked not to say anything derogatory and I appreciate that and, and I hope no one will do that and you might even hurt me, Greg, don't do that. But I'm, I'm not quite sure what we can say and even some of the things we might say that are positive, in theory, we're still releasing information that might be confidential. I mean, we can, I guess we can, we can express a personal opinion, but if we start talking factual stuff unless we, we take it from the firsthand, from the interview, if we read anything that's from their bio or any of their background or we talk about anything or we reference any of that, technically, we are disclosing confidential information. So there's an interesting line there as to where does that start and where does that stop? And so I'm just trying to have an understanding of that because I do appreciate his military career and if I was a wise guy teasing that it was Army instead Air Force, but I was doing ops, so I'm good with that. Worked with the Marines and the Navy and the Army. But, so, you know, where, where does that start and stop?
Is there any more discussion regarding the motion?
It'd be nice if you could answer that because I'd like to say something, but I don't know if I can say it.
Well, if you're not sure, you probably shouldn't say it.
Well, no, I'm going to go for it then. I mean, because for Dr. Brands, he got the highest rated of yeses in the.
Uh, I don't think.
Trustee McKinsey, that is confidential information.
But it's not what anyone said.
Mr. Chairman, I call for the question.
The question's been called for.
So we're, if we call for the question.
We're voting on Dr. Brands.
Yes.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, nay.
Nay.
Nay. The motion is defeated two to three.
I make a motion for.
Mr. Chairman.
Crumbaker.
I think it was John's turn. John asked, should we speak after you?
Mr. Chairman, I would move to select Dr. Dominic Swain to be the next North Idaho College President. I'd offer the board chair to work with the college attorney to negotiate a contract of employment, which contract will need to be approved by the board of trustees.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Now a discussion?
I have an amendment.
Go ahead.
I have a, I offer that we offer Dr. Swain the contract from the prior president with the modification of salary within the range.
The motion has been amended. As stated, is there a second to the amendment? Not appearing, the motion dies for lack of a second.
Todd, were you not given a second?
I'll second it for discussion. I'm, I'm thinking about it.
Discussion.
Sorry, I was.
Discussion on the motion.
Thinking about it.
On the amended motion.
The amended motion.
I mean, it makes it real simple to know what we're voting on.
Okay, would you, Chair Wold?
Yes.
Trustee McKinsey, would you further elaborate on what your motion is so I could better understand, make sure I'm understanding your motion?
All right. I make an amend to the motion that we authorize a contract of the prior president that, what was his name, Dr. McLennan had, for, yeah, with the change of being salary and I'll further amend that to be two years.
And you accept that amended amendment? You were the secretary. You changed the amendment.
Yes, sir, I'm trying to think how to respond appropriately, but I, Chair Wold.
You can accept it or not accept it.
May I ask, may I ask for, sir, may I ask for clarification? When you say the salary, what?
So the prior person.
What, yeah, what are we talking here? So I'm a numbers guy. I hear the word salary, but I don't know what that means. I need context here.
Prior person had a three-year rolling contract and then it was dated 225, which I think the range goes up to 240 now. And says he's in charge of the college, you know, each of the terms in the policy. And Mr. Lyons, you want to help us?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Trustee McKinsey, President McLennan had a number of contracts and early ones had provisions regarding relocation expenses, some other things in there. So the terms change and I will say this to the board, that when you negotiate a contract with an individual who would be the senior leader of an institution, there are always different things, different nuances, they come from different areas, they have different needs. And so my recommendation would be not to nail the contract terms down now. These are. These are what we would negotiate. The board will have the opportunity to discuss and approve or not approve the contract at some point if, if we reach a negotiated tentative agreement with the candidate.
No further discussion?
None of that motion, no, sir.
All in favor of the amended motion? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Nay.
Nay. The amended fails. Go back to the original motion.
I make an amendment.
Right?
I amend that communication with Dr. Swain, that the other trustees are CC'd on that communication. That it be done in writing.
Say that again.
I make the motion that as you negotiate, that it's done through email and that the other trustees are kept in the loop through CC.
Is there a second to that amendment?
I will second it for discussion purposes.
Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I think it's important for transparency to see how the conversations are going. I mean, it's essentially personnel records. We've been proven that we can give us anything outside of open meeting if it's a personnel record, so I don't see why not.
Mr. Chairman, if I, if I could make a point here, I would recommend against that because if we involve all the trustees in the negotiations, then we run potentially a foul of open meeting law.
Is there any further discussion?
No clarification. Only the chair would be negotiating, sir. So it'd just be like getting us information, just like what you've done.
Mr. Lyons, well, the entire board will have access to the, to the contract and then the negotiated contract, correct?
That would be correct, yes.
Would...
Yes, Todd?
Well, okay, I'm not trying to respond directly to what Angela just said, but in prior practice, we've always had access to the contract which has been executed. If I'm understanding, trustee McKenzie is that he would like to have some appraisal of what's going on during the negotiations so we can have an idea of how it's advancing and, and what shape it's taking and, and what some of the parameters are of it before it's completely finalized so that internally trustees may have some input on that. Am I understanding where you're going with this?
Yeah.
Mr. Lyons?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Trustee Banducci, the open meeting law has a, a definition of deliberation that is very broad. So if we have ongoing, if the chairman is negotiating a contract and we have ongoing information that is being fed to the trustees on an issue that they will need to make a decision on, that is, that is potentially a violation of the open meeting law and I would, I would say that would not be an appropriate thing to do.
Just, I have a question, just a clarification. If we're being provided information in preparation of something that we're going to be, make a decision on, why can we be provided it like now before this meeting because it's super convenient and, but not from here on out, Mr. Lyons?
What do you mean?
Like we were provided a lot of information here that we can't give out to people.
You are, you are the, the board that has the unique responsibility by law...
Let him finish.
By law to select the president. That is, that is the employee that you hire. So of this process, you get information from other sources. You do not get fed information from, from board members. So I don't know how else to answer the question. This is something that has to be done, but if you get ongoing feedback from negotiated negotiations, I think that raises an issue that, that is potentially would, would create a violation of the open meeting law.
No further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Mr. Chairman, this is the amendment?
Amendment, the amended motion, yes, excuse me. The amendment.
We're voting on the amendment.
We're working on the amendment. All in favor of the amendment, say aye.
David, sorry, Chair Wal, with all the looks, quizzical looks that we're having here, can we real quickly restate what the amendment is that we are voting on, sir? Just so we're all clear, sorry. I just want to make sure we're all on the same page.
Sure.
I'm getting that, John, I'm not trying to jump in here, but you had the look that I was kind of having myself.
That's fine, go ahead, Greg.
I, the amendment was that the negotiations would be done in writing and that the other trustees, that would be done by Chair Wal, yourself, who's going to do it, and that the other trustees would be kept in the loop with information, i.e. CC or however you do, or a summary of your conversation.
Okay. All in favor of the amended motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
We're voting on the amendment, not the original motion.
You're right.
Is that correct?
You're right. All in favor of the amendment signify by saying aye.
Which is for the communication. I will say aye.
Aye.
As long as we're not violating open...
All those opposed, nay?
Nay.
Nay.
Nay. The amendment loses two to three. Now we go back to the motion. The motion is to hire Dr. Swain.
That's correct, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Banducci?
Dr. Wal, Chair, I would like, oh, let me see, well, I'm going to briefly make a discussion, it's going to be a motion anyway, but in the past, part again of our normal practice was we conducted site surveys. And in our haste in this process, we have not done this. In fact, I believe Judy Meyer, who's in attendance here, was the one that did the site survey for Dr. McLennan in that process back at that time. I think she went back to the college and, and visited with the folks there. I would, I would make a motion that we delay, delay the choice until...
An amendment.
I would make a motion to amend, thank you, sir, make a motion to amend that we delay the choice until site surveys have been successfully completed. In theory, we should have done them on all four, but at a minimum, I think we need to do them on Dr. Swain.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I think it's good to do a site visit before we give someone the keys to the kingdom around here.
Is there any further discussion? Todd?
I'll keep it brief since I brought up, again, in the, in the same vein that there could be value in, in the informal setting in the, having at least one or two opportunities to visit with someone. Sometimes you can get a candid view of someone when you're back talking to the folks where they, where they work and operate and the folks that see them on a daily basis. I'm sure all four candidates that were our finalists, the five-county Dr. Condon before he pulled out, as anybody would as an applicant, you put your best foot forward, you know, you write up your CV and your resume and your history and, and even the references that you would provide would try to be your most positive references. So we've seen everybody at their, at their best as far as we know and, and of course there's some background checks and things that are done in case anything glaringly stands out, you know, when a hire a felon or something. But there could be a value to find out from the people that deal with them on a daily basis and you can ascertain, confirm or deny if, if their management leadership style is as they've portrayed and, and if they are who they say they are and how, how they, particularly how they handle when, when things go wrong and bad. You know, in the military, the way we really can judge a leader is when, when all heck breaks loose and, you know, there's a leader stay calm and cool and collected, as they say, and, and lead and do it right or, or has it become a fire drill? So I, I would, I would like to continue, I, I don't, I'm not, I'm not convinced our vetting has been complete and, and as thorough as it could have been and as a college, so that's, that's why I made the motion.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I would remind the trustees that our consultant did exactly that and provided us answers from their communities.
Clarification, we did, we did talk with listed and unlisted references, so references that all candidates either gave to us on forms that we asked them to complete or the list of references that they submitted in their original list of applications. And then they were informed that we would be calling unlisted references as well, which are people who they did not list as references, we found them on our own. And that was part of the process, part of the information that you have as well.
Thank you, Angela.
Checks.
Greg?
Equating reference checks with a site visit, I think they're two different things. So, I mean...
There's no further discussion? We're voting on the amendment. All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Nay. The amendment loses two to three. We're back to the original motion.
Mr. Chairman, I call for the question.
Question's been called for. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Motion passes three to two. I would like to call a recess of about 10 minutes, let everybody get on their feet a little bit, and we'll be back then. bit, and we'll be back then. We'll go back into active session. Tab four, first reading action, revise annual calendar to add Juneteenth holiday. Dr. Silvers?
Dr. Wolf. Chair Wolf, I would ask at this time, Dr. Silvers will be able to talk to this, but I'm going to ask that we table this so that the college can get together with its constituent groups and others and create more than just a, let's add Juneteenth, but look at all of the federal holidays and how we recognize them, and come back to the board with a better, more complete package for how we handle holidays moving forward.
Can I have a motion table?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you.
Nay? Five oh.
Welcome, Dan O.
Technically, I abstained.
For us people to remember that.
The next item is an action item, change of athletic conference affiliation. Now, Dr. Silvers.
I'm going to jump in at the start again here. I want to be center of attention here for as long as I can be. No. I do want to thank our coaches that are here tonight and that spoke tonight, and understand that I truly understand how committed and dedicated you are to your athletes and to this institution and what you do. This issue has been and remains contentious issue internally and externally for the college community. My request as we go through this discussion is that the board provides specific direction to the administration so that we can have a conversation with the N WAC about this, and that we bring back a recommendation to the board this fall about changes in conference affiliation and the costs of those changes.
Todd?
Chair Wolf, may we begin the discussion, sir?
Well, Dr. Silvers, did you want to?
Oh, did you ask her something first? Go ahead, please.
Let's let her present first.
Everybody, I just was humbly going to ask the, again, the board to provide direction for us so that we can do an analysis, but I do have Sean Noel, our Athletic Director, and Alex Harris, our Dean of Students, and Sarah Garcia readily available here to answer any questions you might have that will help you direct us in what it is you're looking to do.
Now, Todd. Go ahead.
Thank you, Cassie. Dr. Silvers. It's no secret on this campus or in the public that I've been an ardent advocate and supporter of athletics, having myself played at the Division One level, and was very blessed by my participation in a couple of sports while I was at the Academy. And thoroughly enjoyed that. At the Academy, we were at that time in the Western Athletic Conference, now they're in the Mountain West, but we carried national schedules in all of our sports. We played our sister academies almost every year in every sport, or at least we tried to. It's great to see the chance to, you know, four years I was there, we played Notre Dame in football, we played other schools. This year, our baseball team just, we lost in the super regionals to Texas. Texas went on to the College World Series, out in a couple of games themselves, as it turned out. I'd like to see us play at the highest level of competition. I think athletics is a tremendous part of the well-rounded education and growth experiences that someone gets. I know the Academy values that. In fact, if you're not an intercollegiate athlete at the Academy, you have to play in intermurals, and that's at least two times a week. And we have a fall, winter, and spring seasons. So my off-season would be the winter, between a couple of my sports, as it turned out. So I boxed for a couple of years and coached the boxing team. Here's some life experiences you learn when you're a boxing coach and you're in that ring and, you know, that's actually one of our mandatory PE classes, too. So my point is, I think athletics are very important. I think it gives us a lot of name recognition. I think Coach Simmons was speaking to that a little bit. I also think that athletics have a chance to enhance our diversity. I know that's something that we've worked on, but through the ability to recruit, and I think if you look at the composition of our teams over the years, you would see a much higher level of diversity on the athletics teams than you would see in our general population in college or in the community. And so I just want to encourage us to step up and support our athletics. I'd like to, I would like us to do a study and that would figure out what it would cost to do it, but I'd like to take a poll of our coaches, of our programs, and those coaches and programs that would like to go to another level, I'd like to pursue the N WAC to see if they would allow, they would release us mutually benefit, mutual agreement, not just take anybody just out, but do it, you know, with their blessing. And from some of the conversations I've had with coaches over the last while, I would suggest to you that we probably be looking at our men's and women's basketball, but we'll let them confirm that, can't speak for both of them. Coach Simmons spoke to the men today. We've had a change in our coaches, losing both our women's coaches, otherwise I know they were, George and Sam were wanting to go to the NJCAA, so can't speak for them any longer. Had the opportunity to speak with Russell, to Coach Grove, and they'd like to go at it and compete for a national championship, and they have the talent to do it, as does Corey. And as Corey's indicated, they were ranked once before, we've had volleyball ranked once before. My understanding is that Coach Stanley would be interested in that, but again, we'll let her speak for herself. And wrestling, obviously, we're already there, so there's sports that we've proven, have a proven track record, compete at the national level. I'd like to see us investigate with the N WAC to release those sports that choose to do that. And for those that choose not to, I believe soccer, I don't even speak for Ken, but I think Coach Thompson, I think Dave indicated maybe staying in the N WAC, but again, each of them, you know, let's poll them and see if they have a preference. And then, and then one other item is, is I'd like to see a little bit of an equalization. Issue that Coach Grove brought up today about, we need to get him on full-time status, first off, and compensate him appropriately for the time and effort, and if his choice is still to have his dad as his assistant coach, which that's an amazing relationship if they can do that, so that's great on you two guys, that you want to be with your dad that much, and that you don't want to, you know, brain your son or anything, you know how that goes? It works. You know, and give them an appropriate assistant position, so we're not reliant on a volunteer just from a liability standpoint, and in the world of everything else, and especially with being the men's and women's teams, I think we need to have a paid staff, and they're held accountable to all the appropriate things, from Title IX to you name it, and I think that might keep Alex's job simpler, cleaner, if it's not trying to deal with a volunteer, but a paid coach. I know, I imagine there's some lines there, I don't know how those blur, but we need to have proper staffing, and I wouldn't want senior elder Coach Grove to, you know, get a better offer and walk away, and for the younger Coach Grove to be with 20-some kiddos and young men and women, and half of them being ladies. We just need to have proper numbers, and it's the same, I've had also, if we have the funds, I'd still think we need, we're short one assistant coach for wrestling. We got rid of an assistant position there, and we're not covering the maths at tournaments. You need to have at least one coach on every mat, and it's not uncommon at tournaments to have two kids on the mat at the same time, sometimes three, plus you're getting guys ready for the next matches, and that's as much a safety issue as anything. And then, Corey, I don't know if we've got you an assistant coach yet. So we have some issues we need to work on, but let's start with polling the coaches and see who wants to go to the NJCAA. Let's see if we can get a release from the N WAC, and then let's equalize and get our coaching staffs up to the proper numbers for safety and for what we need to cover the, and coach our, I don't want to say, I say kids, our young men and women, because that's what we need to do, and athletics are the face of this college. You know, you may have the greatest English professor, but I've never seen the English professor on the page in the newspaper, but I see the head coach on the page in the newspaper a lot. People know you by sports. I know colleges because of their athletics. I competed against them, I watched my son in college compete against them or whatever. So I think this is a great thing to look at right now, the timing's right, I think A.D. Noel is on board to get us moving forward and improve our athletics program to the stature that we want. And they bring a lot of kids in. People don't understand, but there are costs, but there's a lot of kids coming here because of the athletics, and some of these teams only have this many scholarships as it is. A lot of these kids are paying their own way. I mean, golf, you're a net $100,000 to the plus, so even if you take off a few other things, there's somewhere, and there's a little more room to work. You know, wrestling did that when they had a big roster, most, vast majority of those kids, 20, 30, 40 of them, were paying their own way. So, anyway, that's just my thoughts on the athletics, just 10,000-foot view. Thank you.
Thank you. Pete?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And Trusty Banducia, I agree athletics are very important. I'd like to see an analysis of how it'll affect student enrollment retention, financial impact, short and long term, and not just polling the coaches, but faculty and staff, and then also get some input from the new president as to his thoughts on, you know, the conference affiliation.
Chair.
Right?
I'd like to make a motion. No motions made, as I understand it right now?
No, there's not a motion.
Okay, so, three motions, I'll do separately. A motion, one, hopefully I can get a second one, to poll the coaches, and maybe they can provide a one- to two-page summary of what they think is best for their sport and why, for which conference association. I care about each of the coaches' opinions. Two, I'd like, so, can I get a second on that motion?
I'll second that for discussion.
Is there any discussion?
I call a question.
Questions being called for, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries.
I have a second motion. I'd like to, a motion that we pursue with N WAC, N W A C, what sports they're willing to let us leave, and the costs associated with that, and I think that on that list right now is men's and women's basketball, women's volleyball, and men's and women's golf, and we might as well put soccer on there. I don't know, I think that's, but just if N WAC is willing to do that, if the coaches and the community thinks it's best to keep a sport, any one of those, or probably men's and women's are sticking together, I would guess, but, yeah. So to see what options we even have in front of us, because I know we have wrestling that's national, and everything else is Northwest Conference, Athletic Conference, and so it'd be nice to know what is, if we're all, or some, or sports-specific. So is that an okay motion? Clear?
Mr. Chairman, Trusty McKenzie, if I could ask some clarification, is this a motion to direct the administration to gather the information that you had just discussed?
Yes.
That would make sense.
Yes. To engage with the N WAC and provide cost and timing, and make a plan, essentially, if we were to do that.
Moving seconded, is there any discussion? Unappearing, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay? Motion carries, five zero.
And I may be able to save this motion, but I think it's also wise to take a poll or pulse of NIC campus, and, but we got to do that after we get information on what sports and other stuff, so I'm going to hold that motion. Any other suggested motions, Dr. Silvers?
Thank you. No, I appreciate the time to gather the information that you're seeking so that you can make an informed recommendation and decision.
Todd?
Chair Wolf. I think I would like to make one more motion. It occurs to me- It occurs to me, I don't think this is out of order to do this at this time, because I think everything else we're doing is consistent and is fine, but I would make a motion to make the men's and women's golf coach a full-time position with the commensurate pay, commensurate to his peers on the coaching staff, and that we allocate him one assistant coach position, again, the pay commensurate to the peers on the other coaching staffs. I think that's something we could rectify right now.
I think that's a personnel item that would go through the president.
That is operational, and we would
Okay.
need to do some work on that, and I will, I will, we will need to do some.
Very good. I think that's, I think we have the issues we've talked about, the two things we've passed, I think that's actually separate to address, so I guess we just asked you to address it?
I will, I will, I will get with Sarah and Cassie, and we will see what solutions we may be able to work forward with. Chair Wald, I know John, Trusty Getty has been trying to get your attention.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to make sure that staff understands the last motion that was made and passed, because you covered a lot of ground, Trusty McKenzie.
The third one was was not for the community, you're saying?
Second one. We have made two motions regarding this. The first one was to poll the coaches. The second one is to authorize the administration to talk to the N WAC about what the cost, what, would they be willing, and then to come back with, to the board with the cost.
And and timing, sir.
And time.
Because I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. I think last year it was discussed that for making a decision, and I mean, as you the example of the twenty-two, twenty-three season that were coming up in the fall and spring, we would have had to have done that by December of 2021, if I remember correctly. So I don't remember if that's exactly right, but there was a timeline, maybe it was November, December, January, somewhere in there, of this last winter, that we would have had to make that request to change to be effective for the following year, give proper advance for scheduling and those sorts of things. So that might be our timeline here, where they say, here's the sports we would be willing to allow you to do this, if there's any associated cost, that sort of thing, and then here's the when we would want that request by, to be able to do that for the following, following season. Does that make sense?
Is there any other discussion for this item? Dr. Silves, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay.
Upcoming agenda items?
Hold on, I have a question. When, when Dr. Silves, how long is it going to talk, take to talk to N WAC?
We'll work to get that done by the next board meeting. We'll try to get that in on the August agenda for you guys.
Okay.
Okay. Upcoming agenda items. We did last month take requests, as we had talked about this, that this was agreed to by the board when they did ACCT training, and we brought forth all those items that were put up last month, except for the enrollment update. We did get the report late on Friday, and Dr. Silves and PC talked a little bit about it Tuesday. We are still going through that data, and we'll be bringing that as a report of where Region One students are attending college next month. So we will be bringing that forward to you guys on the next agenda. But I'm asking for what other agenda items are of interest maybe for August or September.
And this is beyond what we've already noted so far this evening?
Correct.
Sorry, Chair Wald.
Yes, Todd?
Well, I should have asked before I addressed the president, sorry.
I'd like to address, there's a policy on guns on campus.
I think we're going to, I'm sorry.
Todd?
I believe we'll have the ability to speak to that under the security on campus, under the informational item.
Yes.
I believe so. I think we're going to get there.
Mr. Chairman, the only thing on my list was deferred maintenance, and the president's already talked about scheduling a workshop. I think that's a great thing. Anything else?
Can, can we schedule a board workshop for early December? Just to plan ahead, it helps me to plan ahead.
Sometime in July, you're saying?
Or it's December, or just November, December, January.
Oh.
Yeah.
So these ones?
No, no, like just a board training, like we did before.
Oh, you'd like more board training?
Yeah.
It'll work.
There's a, or at least make it, give us options.
Okay. Now that appearing, we'll move to the informational items. We have an accreditation update.
The accreditation report that they're going to update on has a lot to do with the recommendations that were made at the end of our seven-year visit. These will be addressed also as part of the April mid-cycle visit, so the NWCCU will be conducting their mid-cycle visit in April 2023. Just the background information.
Thanks for stalling for me.
I was helping you out there.
Appreciate the cover.
I'm actually going to move, because you have a very nice PowerPoint, and I want to be able to see it.
All right, thanks. And we'll make sure we give the board and anyone in the audience a copy of what we're talking about tonight. And thank you for staying, for those in the audience, too, on Zoom, too. I'd like to introduce Chris Brewer and Nishay Noble, Nishay's in the back tonight, and appreciate them, just have a great team. Their level is here, mine is here, but together, the team has great synergy, and also part of the team is Lucy Heine, who's been with N I C for thirty-six years, so she brings a lot of wealth and experience that is just makes the team at least the best I've ever seen in my higher ed career. So tonight, we're going to talk about, as part of accreditation, mission fulfillment and our strategic plan, and we'll briefly talk about the history of planning at N I C, and then we'll talk about the evaluation of the current strategic plan, including all the great work the college has done, and this is also another reason for the presentation, is especially during the last year and a half, the college needs to toot its horn. There's a lot of great work that is supported by the faculty and staff that impact our students at N I C, and you'll see a lot of that evidence tonight. Chris will display a mission fulfillment dashboard that we plan to go live. I shouldn't use the word live, but it'll go public this fall, and we'll try to combine it with our convocation. And just a brief update on our recommendations that are required to the NWCCU as part of the 2020 Year Seven Visit that took place. So there's two things that we're working on, and you'll at least see a good idea of how we're proceeding. The current version of N I C strategic plan may be considered third generation, as the work has evolved over the eight years with three different phases. The first phase of planning, the college launched a comprehensive, inclusive planning process called institutional optimization, derived from the concepts of program prioritization by Dickinson. I O's purpose was to conduct a self-study of program relevance, productivity, quality, and potential to further the college's ability to educate and support the students it serves. Over a hundred and fifty reports were generated, as well as a set of recommendations, so a lot of labor hours in that effort that laid the foundation to the strategic plan as we know it today. The second phase occurred in the fall of 2016, building upon the success of I O, and also the spring 2016 NWCCU mid-cycle report. A group of leaders were assembled to establish a process for integrated planning at N I C. This group was tasked with building a foundation for planning and executing several initiatives to prepare the institution for an update to their strategic plan. This effort is branded Cultivate N I C, so Cultivate N I C and the strategic plan are synonymous. The themes were elicited from general initial conversations. Cultivate N I C also includes a SWOT analysis, and there was a subgroup that was selected that developed three goals and eight objectives, and they are known around the campus community as the the grade eight, for those here in the audience tonight. Tonight, score, tonight, we'll talk about the strategic plan, the current version of the strategic plan that was amended just before the Year Seven Visit in April 2020, and there was a diverse group that took a look at the goals and objectives, and then from there, they tweaked the wording as we see it now. So tonight, the goal's moving forward is to monitor the progress of Cultivate using the definitions of improving institutional effectiveness associated with the 2020 NWCCU standards, and we want to be mindful of the time and effort collectively with the past, and at the same time recognizing there is need for changes we transition from the pandemic. N I C's mission statement, very important. It was revised back in 2013 and reads as follows. "North Idaho College meets the diverse educational needs of students, employers, and the North Idaho community it serves through a commitment to student success, educational excellence, community engagement, and lifelong learning." Mission statement is very important. I believe the board at one time used to read the mission statements at the beginning of the meetings. It brings great attention to why the college exists and why we're here. And right now, this slide represents the current strategic plan, and the three main goals, ensure affordable student access, completion, and transfer, and underneath it, there's three strategic objectives. The second goal is invest in people, processes, and places, with three strategic objectives. And then the third goal is engage with community and workforce partners with two strategic objectives. I'm breezing, I'm breezing through this part, because we're going to get to a scorecard, and it doesn't do the justice, the work that it took to get to this point. So I feel a little guilty in breezing through this, and it's no disrespect to anybody here in the audience, as well on Zoom, and faculty and staff, past and present, who were involved with it. This took a lot of time to get here. The 2020 NWCCU standards require member institutions to evaluate their strategic plans, although there's really nothing prescriptive in the standards about how often, but most higher education institutions years uses an annual period. And there was a subgroup, and I thank them so much for the time it took over the last year and a half, that looked at almost every collection point that we had as an institution. Chris, Lucy, and Nishay, I know that it was a lot of time and effort, and as well as the smaller leadership team, and I see Sarah Garcia here tonight, and I know Ken Wardiski was part of it, and I know I'm forgetting some folks, too, so the executive team. But we narrowed it down to twenty-four, and at one time, we had previous accreditation reports that ranged around forty-five measures, but we wanted to narrow it down to a smaller amenable amount. And please feel free to submit comments or suggestions, as mission fulfillment measures and our strategic plan will change as our environment changes. And of course, anytime you hire a new president, and it's very natural for a president to take a look and totally, maybe just maybe even coming up with another strategic plan, but it'll be up to the new, the president, to determine the future course of strategic planning at N I C, and we're looking forward to that. The college was fortunate enough to prepare for the 2020 Year Seven Visit by conducting a practice visit, or we like to call a mock visit, just before the holidays in 2019, and one person I remembered so much was retired President Gerald Humphrey. He told us not only to reduce the measures that we have been using, but to equate the process like a patient would when receiving a wellness exam. I'm scared, I have mine next week, by the way. Just like we have our vital measures such as blood pressure, heart rate, weight, pulse, and several others in blood work, the college also has vital measures such as enrollment, retention, finances, student achievement, completion, the quality of our buildings, grounds, and technology, and of course, the college's connection to the community. If there's something that is concerned during the wellness exam, then medical providers may recommend some type of reactive measure, such as consuming less or exercising more. Likewise, we can be proactive and work on maintain a certain level in advance. The same concept applies to the measures leading to the goals and strategic plan. We may have to react to certain measures like enrollment, of course, with the weekly team meetings we have, with trying to get the work out to the communities, with the faculty and staff, to be in proactive approach, such as the first-year experience to meet acceptable levels for our, each of our goals. So there's three data sources. We use the most recent year available. The N C C B P is a voluntary process where institutions join and submit data, along with about a hundred and fifty-five other institutions. The annual report that is nationally known normed provides the college information on how it performs in comparison with other institutions that choose to participate. N I C trends are all of the internally produced measures. It does include some state-required data and not the typically nationally normed. However, there may be some data that's normed to a peer group. And then IPADS, which many of you may know, is a federal collection process that is mandated by colleges and universities as as we participate in the federal financial student aid program. So the three, we took a look at it, came up with twenty-four measures within the three goals, and the first goal, ensure affordable student access, completion, and transfer. We have twelve measures here, and the tables, columns include the source, the year-over-year trend, the three-year trend, the percentile, and an evaluation. The year-over-year trend has different colored arrows. A green arrow means improvement over the past year. A yellow arrow means a zero to two percent drop from the previous year, and a red arrow signifies a decrease that is greater than two percent from the prior year. The evaluation column includes either a blue checkmark, meaning that the measure we consider successful, or a red X signifying that improvement is needed. And the evaluation was conducted by the Planning, Strategy, and Effectiveness Team and was approved by the Executive Planning and Accreditation Team. There are many measures that the college performs well, such as the first credit momentum for both the thirty and twenty-four credits per year, with scores in the top one-third percentile, the top third of the nation. That's great. The fall-to-fall, next-term persistence, and the next-term persistence rate for full-time students are also above the national average. However, there are two measures that you can see that are worth noting for improvement, the fall-to-fall retention rate, that has a measure that dropped from a year ago, and is also in the bottom half of the percentile rank, and also the gateway course momentum for English metric that has a measure that dropped from a year ago, and is also in the lower third percentile. So we're aware of that, and we want to have our improvement initiatives focus on those. But to the right on the table, you see everything that, the executive team just look at everything we can over the past few years that fit in that one goal, and just look at all the great work. The first-year experience, which we're in the middle of right now, there's a team working on that, with their goal of improving retention and completion. The pandemic, the faculty and staff stood up and enhanced their course delivery message, methods because of that. Online student orientation became reality, the Teaching and Learning Center, which focuses on professional development for our faculty, the Student Learning Outcomes Assessment Dashboards, that is a faculty-led project, which now focuses on general education outcomes, and that's going to transition to program assessment outcomes that will help us with our, one of our recommendations. But just a lot, a lot of things going on with goal number one.
Kurt?
Yes, sir.
And just for the board's knowledge, on that last slide, any of those things that are in that improvement initiative would be great topics for celebrating success in the future.
That is right.
So if there's anything that interests you guys, trusty, sorry, please let us know, and we would love to provide more information about the success that we're having and the improvements that they're making for our students.
And also conversely, if there's something that faculty and staff, the members of committee may have felt that, this is not a total inclusive list, but please feel free to reach out. may have felt that this is not a total inclusive list, but please feel free to reach out and let me know too, because we worked on this for a while, but we only had so many bullets to put in here. Goal number two, invest in people, processes, and places. The college has continued to perform well with this goal, with continuing the success of the April 2020 NWCCU Visit. The college has controlled costs for students, invested in faculty and staff professional development, performed well financially, invested in deferred maintenance, invested in both classroom and employee computer workstations. And one measure to note, that NIC's Composite Financial Indicator Score is in the top third in the nation with the percentile rank.
Can you say that again?
The CFI is in the composite financial, yeah, the Composite Financial Racial Index.
Oh, in top third?
Top third, yes, sir. Yeah, it's a, I believe it's three ratios, right? Yeah, primary reserve, capital resources, ability to borrow, and net income ratios. The college performs very well, and a large part of it is there's no debt. The college is one of the few institutions I know that doesn't carry any.
Could you at least give me more information on that one specific topic?
Yes, sir.
And I have one, if I may interrupt, the year-to-year deferred maintenance, shouldn't that be a green arrow? That's good that it goes down, right?
That is the investment, Mr. Chairman, Trustee McKenzie, that ratio just shows the level of investment that is in operational dollars. Is that correct, Sarah?
So it's the actual expenditures that we have made to address deferred maintenance issues. So the higher the expenditures, the better the score because we are allocating more resources to deferred maintenance.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And moving on to goal three, engage with community and workforce partners. It's no secret that the college continues to decline enrollment, but the college is not alone as it ranks just above 51st percentile compared to the national norm. The college also performs well with the non-credit programs due to the success of the Workforce Training Center, another non-credit program's available to the community. I know there's very excitement in the future as we're considering CBE education, competency-based education, especially on the non-credit side, so that's very exciting. Dual credit is important at NIC, so both enrollment and CTE in general studies are included as separate measures. And something that's very important for tracking CTE programs, our students perform well with licenser pass rates that are above 90%. The college keeps track of all students who finish their studies and qualify to take a licenser or certification exam to obtain a license or credential. Next, Chris will showcase a mission fulfillment dashboard that the IR team has worked on.
All right, thanks, Steve. Thank you, trustees. Good evening. This shouldn't take too long. Let's run through this really quick. So basically what you're looking at here, we have the first page of the dashboard set up as a, just a mission fulfillment at a glance. So what it's showing you is all the goals that Steve just went through, and then the associated measures that go with each one of them. And so these measures have all been selected because they align with that goal. We call them common campus measures, or CCMs for short. And then the status over here is set up, it's based on the benchmarks that we established for each one of these measures. So it's relative to where we currently stand based on the most recent data available for that metric. So if it's green, it means it's 90% or above in relation to that benchmark, or if it's yellow, it's 60 to 90%, and if it's red, then it's below 60. So you can see at the moment, we don't have anything in the red. So the next tab, if I can see it. Yes. Challenged, all right. Okay, so each of these, the goal tabs, they just align further into more detail into each one of those metrics. And we also put the objectives in there as well, because it's a little clearer how the measures align with some of the objectives as well. But yeah, they're all just broken out here in these charts and graphs. And then on each of these, if any one of them, if you want a little bit more information, if you just hover over it for a bit, it gives you more detail, and it'll provide the definition for each one of the metrics. Let's see, it's moved down, they're all in here. And then also you can see the benchmark, most of them or all of them show the benchmark that we've established for each of these. Move on to the next one. Same story here. This goal two, and the objectives, and then each of those measures. And all of these, the dates and the trend years are a little different for each one of them, because everything's kind of on a different cadence, so we don't necessarily have all the data available for all of these metrics at the same time. But we are providing the most recent that we do have available. And then lastly, goal three.
I have a question.
Yeah, sorry.
I love this Power BI report server. Is this like open public URL to anyone at home?
Not yet, but that's the intention. Right now, we're on a version that we need to update, and so I think IT mentioned that starting July 1, we're going to transition to that. So hopefully, we should have that done by the fall when we need it done. But there's something, I don't know the technical side of it, but it's more secure, the new version, to provide that open URL link. But yeah, that is the intention, to make this public facing, and anybody can go in and see where we are.
Just an idea, I mean, coming into a trustee, there's so many technical terms to be familiar with, and I just see this, and I want to get more of them too. It might be nice to have like a one-minute video go along with what each of these terms mean, and kind of like FTEs explained to people, YouTube video promotional for NIC.
That's not a bad idea, yeah. But also, you know, too, the detail is here for the definitions. So if you hover over any other metric, it'll show you that, but also all of them are defined on the last tab. So in each one of them, when you hover, they give you the CCM number, and so you can, if you wanted a look of all the definitions in one place, it's in this last tab.
Awesome.
And that's about it, pretty quick. Thank you.
We are making progress with the two recommendations. Tonight, you heard recommendations for mission fulfillment and planning. The second recommendation we're working on has to do with student learning, the outcome assessment. That was led by Dr. Laura Godfrey and Dean Gail Ballard, and their leadership with the JEM leads, the department chairs, division chairs, have made progress with creating a new dashboard where they mark the student's progress for each of the individual learning course outcomes, and then there's a dashboard that's created, and the faculty are going through to identify equity gaps, and then from there, they can take that data and come up with improvement initiatives to help with retention and completion. And we're making great progress, and the next phase of that level is going to program outcomes. And so we appreciate the faculty and staff for their leadership, and before, I know it's late, but, oh, yes, sir.
Well, you've shown us, these are two initiatives or like topic areas from, when did they originate? From like four years ago or something, right? Like the last site visit or?
Mr. Chairman, Trustee McKenzie, these originated as a result of the recommendations from the Year Seven Visit that took place in 2020.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Thank you.
You're welcome. You're welcome. But yet before, at least, just want to thank Dr. Burns out in the audience, because she approached me to join the NWCCU Mission Fulfillment Fellowship, and that has come to completion and the support with Dr. Sabali and Dr. Silves, too. We made progress, and it was like a college-level course. NWCCU and the leadership there, it made a mechanism to move forward with both recommendations. I tried to get a two-for-one, but they told me that was too big of a bite, so the NWCCU Mission Fulfillment Project for the NIC is a slower dashboards. The mission fulfillment, though, we were able to take advantage of all the professional development opportunities, brought that back to the executive team and Chris, Lucy, and Nishay, and that's why we're making a progress right now, just great support, so appreciate that. And that concludes my report.
Discussion of security on campus.
As they're coming up, this has been an item that I have received many questions on in the last month when I've been at community events, the alumni board meeting, it came up after the tragic events down in Texas. Alex, Stuart, and all of our security officers do important work keeping our campus safe, and there has been discussion amongst the community colleges as well, and one of the community colleges is moving to arming their security officers, just to give some context of what is going on at other community colleges. I think this discussion is important for our community to see that we take their safety seriously and the work that Alex and his staff are doing in this regard. So thanks, Alex, go ahead.
Thanks, Chairman Wall, trustees, Mr. Lyons. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. I wasn't quite what information that you exactly wanted, although sitting in here, I think I know the direction it's going. One would say that I would be happy to give a presentation on all of our security and safety and threat assessment initiatives we do on campus. I think, but in the interest of time, I would offer that up as a celebrating success in the near future, because I'm very proud of the work we've done in the last seven-plus years on making this a safe campus. But if there are specific questions that you have that you'd like me to address, if I have that information tonight, I will happily answer that.
Todd?
Chairwell, Alex, I don't know if this is a question, maybe it's more of a request. I would love to understand what it would take from a training perspective and then the incumbent costs to do that. I don't know if we could somehow incorporate the post program we have here to help us with this, but I would like to see our security forces here trained and to carry as a part of their job function, and I suspect there's folks that we could talk to to figure out what that takes to do that, to get them certified. I don't know if that's any different than regular law enforcement, again, that's why I mentioned the post. I don't know if we can somehow piggyback on that somehow or use that to our advantage to keep our costs a little bit lower, since we can do some of that in-house, I'm not sure. But I'd love to see a cost estimate, what that would entail, equipment, obviously the firearms themselves, ammunition, the appropriate training, and then the recurring training, you know, there's a certain, to keep your proficiency, you have to shoot on a regular basis and all that, and, you know, if we have to seek out third-party instructors or not, or, you know. So I'd love to see what something like that would look like and what it would cost and how quickly we could implement that. I think in today's world, while a Taser can be effective in certain circumstances, I think we need to give our security, in addition to our SRO, every opportunity to defend themselves and to protect those here on campus. I would be interested in that. If I can, I would make a motion to that effect, that I ask for Mr. Harris to provide us with information as to what it would take and timeline and cost to arm our security forces here on campus.
Todd, this is not an action, you can certainly direct him.
Yeah, maybe it's not a motion, but if I could get a sense of the board, would the rest of the board be comfortable with asking him to try to get us information on this topic? Inputs from the rest of you.
I think you have consensus.
Anybody got any concerns or issues with that that you should be aware of?
Steve?
No concerns, issues. I would also like just to see analysis of liability insurance and input from student.
Sarah, insurance update.
Chairwell, trustees, it's no fun being the last person on the agenda, but I will try to keep it brief. As you are aware, we received a letter, I'm sorry, I apologize, I can't remember the date, but from our insurer, ICREM, informing us that they were going to not be renewing our policy as of July 1st. Since that time, we have filed an appeal with ICREM, and they have agreed and issued a short-term policy for us for the period of July 1st through September 30th of 2022 to allow us additional time to seek out additional alternate coverage. So there is, insurance is not my top-notch experience area, but it's been told to me that 90 days is an industry standard for making a conversion in insurance. So we have been working with our current broker on securing those additional policies, and I have also worked with a couple of other insurance companies in the area who have expressed an interest in providing services to the college. At this time, I've had conversations with the interim president as well as Dr. Silves and spoken with president's cabinet. In the interest of time and staff availability and resources, we would like to continue with securing insurance through our current broker for this upcoming fiscal year, which would be July 1st through June 30th, 2023, so July 1st, sorry, 2022 through June 30th, 2023. But in the spring of this year, to go out for an RFP for broker services, to allow any and all insurance companies in the area who would like to make a proposal to the college of the types of services they could provide to us, go through an official RFP process, and then select a broker who would then be tasked with providing us appropriate coverage for the year beginning July 1st, 2023.
Are there any questions for Sarah? Great.
Do I hear that correctly? You're going to, till the spring of next year, you're going to, I think you selected a broker through an existing RFP process, or it's not ICREM?
No, the broker who we work with for our prior ICREM policy is, as soon as they were notified by ICREM that our policy was being non-renewed, they started to research and seek out coverage for us after that announcement. And so that firm has been working on that since the day that we received our first announcement.
There could be some confusion here, Greg. You might be under the impression that we go to ICREM directly. ICREM is sold like any other insurance company through a broker, so whether I'm getting Allstate or whatever for property and casualty, for liability, errors and omissions, whatever, ICREM is just another provider that that broker has as an option to provide the insurance. It just so happens ICREM is a niche market, working with municipalities and educational institutions and stuff like that, but it's still gone through a broker locally. So as Mr. Winkler stood up and was representing Redmond Insurance, that's a broker. They can go and contract with one of the carriers, ICREM being one of them, to provide the insurance. So there's no special thing about ICREM in that context, it's just utilized and acquired through just a broker like any other insurance agency would go to a carrier.
Are there any other questions?
I have a discussion. Professional services are supposed to rotate every six years. Seems like a broker would be in that category.
I have not been aware of an RFP that we've done for broker services simply because we have been, partially because we've been, not simply, but partially because we've been using ICREM for a number of years, and we've just continued the policy.
And Trustee Giddy, if I say something correctly, please, because I know you're in the biz too, but I'm not on the property casualty side, so I'm a little bit at arm's length, so if I misstate. But the way I understand the issue now, and this is something we need to be conscious of, is that, I believe it's Dusty Harris is our current agent, but Mr. Harris has the ability to basically block every carrier, because he's the current agent. because he's the current agent, and he can go out and say, "Okay, I want you to quote, you to quote, you to quote, you to quote, you to quote." And that prohibits from the other insurance agencies to go to those same carriers and get a quote. So, for example, if we have ICrimp through Mr. Harris, no other agency could go to ICrimp and even get a quote to compete. In theory, the numbers would be the same. So I think what we have to do, if we're going to do this, and I'm still questioning why we can't do it now, if we have 90 days, because July, August, and September is 90 days, and we're still in June. But that's a secondary issue I'll come back to in a moment. We have to make it so that we're actually not competing for who the carriers is going to be our insurance. What we're going to be competing them is for the actual contract for the services rendered. In other words, who's going to provide the CSR's, the customer service reps, the broker, all those sorts of things? You know, the company we're going to call, we have a question that's going to work with our carrier, in this case, it's been ICrimp. Because that'll put them on a level ground. Do we want to work with, you know, the Redmond Group or Payne West, I think is Mr. Harris's, or whoever else? Because otherwise, there's nobody else that's going to ever get to compete, because he can block all the carriers. Because they will only give a bid, if we turn in a bid for NIC, if I understand it correctly, on the PNC side, property and casualty, excuse me. They will only bid on NIC to the first broker that asked for the bid on NIC. They wouldn't give it to two or three. So the bid would be the same anyway, but they don't do that. And he has a little bit of inherited advantage in that he's our existing broker. So he kind of knew all this before anybody else did, anyway. So he probably was able to ascertain and secure all those. So we have to do this in a way that would be, I think, a level playing field to the different agencies that are out there, and look at them at their merits as an agency to who could provide the best service and that sort of thing. And the carrier would be kind of a secondary issue. We would hope their expertise. Most of them would have the same basket of carriers that they would be quoting for us. So we should see similar prices. So I just throw that out there as kind of an oh, by the way, because I think we need to be conscious of that, how we structure the RFP, RFQ, however we do it. Because that's a unique thing with the insurance industry. John, am I getting this right?
Mr. Chairman, and Trustee Vanducci, basically, you are. I'm not going to get into the discussion between the difference of a broker and an agent.
Fair enough. I wasn't trying to delineate to that level of detail.
Right.
Chairman Wold.
Yes.
And Trustee Vanducci, in response to your comments just now. That is my intention. And if I am using improper terminology, I apologize. It's, again, as I said, not what I majored in in college. But my intention is to be able to provide an opportunity for anyone who provides insurance and services locally to be able to propose to us how they would handle our account, so that then we can make a choice for the person or firm who will do that, and then allow them to have the free rein to go out and secure the insurance as appropriate for the college. The reason behind the timing of me suggesting doing this in the spring in order to have the insurance coverage start on July 1st of 2023 is simply volume of workload that we have, both in our office. We have our audit coming up. We have a new president starting. We have trustees to get up to speed with things that are going on. This is, I am concerned about being able to do this correctly and appropriately and fairly through the RFP process. And I would prefer to have more time to do so.
I've gone through several RFPs for property casualty liabilities. And what I've seen is it takes, depending on the size of the staff, anywhere from 15 to 30 days for the RFP to be written, sent out to the insurance carriers, brokers. Give them 90 days to fill it out, get it back, review it, and have follow-up questions. So I see where you're coming from with a short timeline and other projects coming up. So, yes, it could be done sooner. I'm not sure if it would be, given the justice it needs, but.
Todd?
Chair Wold, two questions. One is, are we going to be able to have a contract that would be for the remainder of the fiscal year? Because I'm guessing it's a cleaner for us to start a contract on July 1st to coincide with the fiscal year.
Most likely, yes.
So they can give us a partial-year contract, I'm guessing? All right. This is a request, I guess, or I'm thinking out loud. One of the things that I've talked about since I entered this board is I would like to see all our professional services codified in a way that there is a regular cycle for the renewal and review of their contracts. Some have been kind of skipped over rather haphazardly. I mentioned earlier, our auditors as being one example. There are some others. I know we've worked towards that, and we've made significant progress on that. But I would like to see every expenditure of public money that we have for professional services should have a timeline that tells everybody in the community when those contracts are going to go up for bid. And when they, if they're in the community and they provide those services, will have the opportunity to bid on providing those services. Everybody should have equal access to be working and receiving the public funds that the taxpayers are providing, because they are the taxpayers. And that's full transparency, and that's the fairness that we should be having. So I'd like us to do a review to see if there's any of them that we have not established, whether that's annual, biannual, triannual, whatever, six years. Some for various reasons, you know, makes more sense to have a quicker frequency or not so quick. So I would like to see us do that. Maybe it's a good time to do that also. That's a discussion I've had with Chris over the years. On occasion, I think you might have been party to some of that. I don't know, I don't remember if you were or not.
I think Dr. Sabali wrote.
I'll defer to Sarah first, and then I'll jump in on this.
Thank you, Chairman Wold, Trustee. We do have a number of contracts. We actually have four or five RFPs coming up this coming spring. We have banking services, we have copy releases, we have audit services already on the docket for this coming spring, based on our rotational schedule. There are also some services that we choose to have not be locked into one vendor for, which may be considered professional services. So I will have conversations internally, and I have a list of what our current contract schedule is that I believe you have a copy of, but I can get you another copy of.
I would like a copy as well.
If I have it, I'll apologize. I don't know where it's at.
I will get the full board.
Thank you.
I will provide Dr. Sabali with that information.
I have a question. Is there like a public website, like dedicated to contracts? And like, what's coming up two years from now, one years from now?
Not that far in advance, I'm sorry. Chair Wold, Trustee McKenzie, no, not, it's not that future-looking outlook. We do use a site called Public Purchase, which is a public purchasing. It's a forum for creating RFPs and proposal areas where people can go in and get all the information that they need. And it allows us to answer questions and receive questions and treat everyone fairly throughout the process.
Can we work towards having a website where people see what contracts are coming up? Just to familiarize what contracts even NIC does and?
I would defer to Dr. Sabali.
Can you repeat that question?
Can you repeat that question? I'm sorry.
It'd be nice to have a available website to where people can see what contracts are coming up on the schedule that we're supposed to be following. And it seems we partially follow. But like, for example, if we know, for example, that this brokerage service for PNC is coming up in spring timeframe, like a website where people can, when we know that, they go there. So.
I will work with our IT department and our public records custodian and see if that's something that we can work towards and how quickly we can do that. Thank you.
Are there any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, I just might jump in here with a short update for the trustees. You and I offered ICrimp a number of options that they might consider. The bottom line is, they would not separate the packages. Some of the easy items, they weren't willing to carve out for us, for insurance. So at the end of the 90 days, as far as I can tell, we're done with them until sometime in the future when they might reconsider.
Chair Fema?
Yes, Greg.
I just want to say, too, if you don't respect people's rights, then you get sued. And it just kind of, if you look at what we paid out for and other stuff, I feel like it's kind of half the problem is certain counsel advice.
Is there any other questions or discussion for Sarah? Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you.
We're to the end of the agenda. Remarks for the good of the order. Dr. Swain has been with us and may still be with us on Zoom all night tonight. I spoke with him, and he's excited to come to NIC and work with all five trustees. So that's excellent news to hear. And on behalf of the Board of Trustees, I'd like to thank the finalists, all of them, for spending their time with our communities and our Board of Trustees. We had four very outstanding candidates to consider, and our decision was not an easy one at all. In addition, I would like to thank the college staff who worked to make the process as smooth as possible to ensure the finalists had a good experience while visiting us. Lastly, thank you to the Presidential Search Committee. The search process was a labor-intensive process that required a lot of time and effort from the NIC staff and committee members. We understand that this effort has been a large commitment of time, and the college community is grateful for their willingness to serve NIC. Is there any other remarks for the good of the order?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I have several. First of all, I was involved in the formation of Save NIC. When I got the appointment as a trustee, I divested myself of any interest with that organization. So there's no conflict of interest. ICrimp has agreed to send their board trainer for us, the new trustees, and anyone else that might want to join us. I'm supposed to be, or they're supposed to be in contact with us to set a date. And the last thing I'd like to say is, I'd like to thank Dr. Sabali. He has been very helpful for my time on the board, and he's gone out of his way to help me along. So thank you.
And I'd like to echo that. Mike and I have had to work together pretty closely for the last month, and I have appreciated all that you've done. And Shannon, thank heavens you're well again. Is there anything else for the good of the order? Not words, Jerry.